Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us here for the City Council Meeting and Public Hearing of June 24th, 2024. I'll note for the record that all members of council are present and accounted for except for Councilman Dorito, who will not be able to join us this evening. And as always, we begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're willing and able, please stand and join us.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare on the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get started on the agenda, I just wanted to announce for anyone who may be here for a case that had been advertised, that the zoning case for 306 Thompson Street, that's case Z-24-08/B-24-08, will not be heard this evening. The applicant has deferred that item, and it will be appearing on the July 29th, 2024 Agenda. So if you were here for that, you freed up a few extra hours this evening. That being said, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent Agenda consists of the City Council Work Session Minutes for the work session from May 20th, 2024, the City Council Meeting Minutes from the meeting of June 3rd, 2024, and the alcoholic beverage license application for consideration of the approval of application PH-24-AB-11 by Bez LLC, DBA Zaza Restaurant and Lounge, 124 DeVore Road, Alfreda, Georgia 3009. It was a change in business ownership. Registered agent is Arenz Ahim, I believe, if I didn't butcher that name too badly. Also, Consent Agenda has the settlement and release for progressive claim 23-575-7044 and the financial management report for the month ending April 30th, 2024. Is there anyone on council who would like to remove anything from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on the Consent Agenda?
No, Ms. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on the Consent Agenda, now's your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council on the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I have a motion by Councilman Mitchell, a second by Councilman Will, to approve the Consent Agenda, as outlined in the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the Consent Agenda, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. So we'll move on to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. First item under public hearing is MP-24-04/CU-24-06 SEV Laser North Point Commons Master Plan Pod B. Mr. Woodman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first item before you this evening is a request from SEV Laser requesting a master plan amendment and conditional use to operate a spa services business in a 1,546 square foot suite in the North Point Commons Master Plan Pod B. Have the location map on the overhead. The property is located at 970 North Point Drive and Suite, B as in boy, 130. Property is owned PSC, Planned Shopping Center. Spa services business Sugar Coat Beauty was approved at Stonewalk at North Point Shopping Center in 2019, but has since vacated that shopping center. SEV Laser is a, provides laser hair removal services. They have one location existing in Georgia, Georgia, at Lenox Mall, and several locations across the country. They would provide laser hair removal services, as well as skin tightening and injectables. Hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Applicant anticipates up to three employees at this location. We did look at the review criteria for a master plan amendment and conditional use. We believe this use is consistent with the future land use designation of the property, which is commercial. There's sufficient parking on the property. And just to show you the shopping center here, this shopping center is where the Guitar Center, I believe, is probably the most prominent business at that location. There is sufficient parking within this shopping center, and we believe the use would be compatible with the surrounding retail uses and for other locations of this business, which are situated in retail corridors, shopping centers. As I mentioned earlier, this business would replace a spa services business that previously occupied the property, but has since vacated that premises, and there are no other spa services businesses within 2,000 feet, as required by the definition in our code. The applicant did provide a citizen participation plan. No comments were received, according to the applicant. We did show this item to the public at the May 8th Community Zoning Information Meeting. There were three public comments with no objection. Then the Planning Commission reviewed the, or considered the item at their June 6th Planning Commission meeting. There were no public comments at that meeting, and ultimately Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval of the item, subject to six conditions, as outlined in the staff report in your packets, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Woodman on this item? Thanks, sir. Would the applicant like to come forward at this time?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Paul Madovosian with DOM, and I'm representing SEV Laser.
If you could, I'll just note that, for the public record, I need you to give your address as well.
Sure. I live at 3010 Montrose Avenue in Montrose, California, in Los Angeles.
Welcome to Alfreda.
It's been, it's been a pleasure. In the interest of time, I'd like to keep this short, but I'll be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
No, Ms. Mayor, we do not.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this item, now is your chance to do so. And I see no one come forward, so we'll close public comment on this item. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, tonight I'd offer a motion to approve MP-24-04/CU-24-06 SEV Laser North Point Commons Master Plan Pod, as presented this evening by Mr. Woodman.
Second. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel to approve, and a second by Councilman Brady. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, as outlined in the motion by Mayor Pro Tim, please vote yes, otherwise vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. Congratulations. Hope you enjoy your time here. The next item up on our agenda this evening is item Z-24-10 Chapman 152 Marietta Street. Mr. Woodman, once again, you have the floor.
The next item before you is a request for rezoning to allow for the construction of a mixed-use building with one for-sale condominium unit and 4,000 square feet of medical office and retail space. This is on a .45 acre property in the downtown. Rezoning is requested from C2 General Commercial to DTMU Downtown Mixed Use, and the location map is on the overhead. This property is located at 152 Marietta Street. Property is developed with two structures that are previously, previously used for single-family dwellings, and the future land use designation of the property is mixed-use, which does allow the proposed, the requested zoning and uses. This is the applicant's site plan, just to orient you. This is Marietta Street, frontage here, and the new proposed two-story building. Again, it's a mixed-use building. There would be a one-for-sale condominium unit on the second floor of the building, with 4,000 square feet of space on the first floor of the building. The applicant is proposing to split the first floor up into two suites. Half of it would be for her medical office use, and then the other half would be used for retail space. Access, as you can see on the site plan, is from Marietta Street, with the parking behind. There are, UDC requires 12 parking spaces for the uses proposed on the property, and the site plan does depict 13 spaces. So they do comply with minimum parking. They do also comply with the minimum amenity space or open space required, and there is open space in a tree save area at the rear of the property, and these represent the trees that they're saving. There are five trees being saved, including two specimen trees. The applicant proposes pervious pavement within the parking area and drive aisle to address stormwater requirements. These are the applicant's proposed renderings. They are proposing the building in the Mercantile style, brick and stone, primarily brick with some stone accents on the front of the building. We did send this to the downtown consultant, who believes that the building does comply with the downtown design regulations. We did recommend that the building have a residential character. Marietta Street has a mix of pitched roofs, a lot of residential along that road currently, but there are some flat-roof townhomes on that road as well. We did encourage the applicant to try to provide a pitched roof here. They would, they went with the flat roof, so that they could use that for outdoor amenity space for the condo unit.
Michael, what does that mean, what you just said?
I'm sorry?
About outdoor use, flat roof? I didn't understand what you meant by that.
So the second floor, second floor of this building would be used for a condominium unit, for the, the doctor that owns this property, and she wants to use this as, as her residence, and then she wants to use the rooftop for an outdoor amenity area, that she could, seating area, just for the residential use only. Then this is the applicant. The applicant did provide a landscape plan. They did provide this because there are some conditions related to the streetscape along Marietta Street, and they just wanted to show that they were able to comply with our streetscape requirements for the planter between the street and the required sidewalk, as well as meeting the landscape strip requirement. We looked at the review criteria for a requested zoning change. We believe that the proposal is consistent with the future land use, would not adversely affect the usability of adjacent nearby properties. And then, of course, as, as shown in the comprehensive plan, Marietta Street is envisioned to redevelop into a mix of residential office and neighborhood commercial uses, and we believe that that's consistent with what the applicant is proposing. This was shown, this item was taken to the May 8th Community Zoning Information Meeting. There were four public comments left on the sheets, one in support, and then there were some concerns that the building is not consistent with other buildings, the building height and parking. The applicant did make changes to the building as a result of those comments, and that is what you saw in the renderings that I just showed you. This item was considered by Planning Commission at their June 6th meeting. There were no public comments at that meeting, and Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval of the applicant's request, subject to the 10 conditions, as outlined in the staff report in your packets. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Woodman? Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Michael. The, are there any concerns of staff as to what the other retail space would be used for?
So we did place in condition one, yes. I mean, we, we didn't want it just completely open to just retail use, as proposed by the applicant. So in condition one, we do have, the last sentence reads that the retail space shall be limited to retail service uses. So the intent is, we wouldn't have concern if that space was used for a retail service use that would complement the applicant's medical office business. So it could be like a hair salon would be appropriate, but we did not think that it would be appropriate for just general retail. So it would not necessarily be appropriate for like a retail boutique, like a clothing store, or something like that. So that's why we added that sentence into the end of condition one.
And you feel like that's enough to, to limit the use?
We, we certainly could make changes to that. I mean, there's, there's many options, you know, you could, if you have concerns of the retail, that certainly could be stricken altogether, and it could be less limited to office use only, medical and professional office use only. Certainly, we could also list some retail service uses, if that would make you feel a little bit more comfortable with it.
What is our stated retail services definition?
I would have to pull that, that definition. Do you have it? Thank you, Molly.
Retail services establishment is a business principally engaged in providing a service, as opposed to products, to the general public, such as banking or financial institution, real estate or insurance office, barber or beauty shop, travel agency, amusement or recreation center, health clinic, legal firm, professional service, and the like.
Okay. That narrows it down enough for me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Woodman? Thanks, sir. Would the applicant like to come forward at this time?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jean Chapman, and I have been practicing medicine in the city of Alfreda for the last 21 years, and currently on Old Alabama Connector Road, and I would love to bring my business and my loyal patients to Marietta Street. And, and I live in, I live in Milton, Georgia. And then you-
Did she state her address?
I have it in the application. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Sorry to interrupt.
If I may put this on there. So I made a list of things, or businesses that could complement my practice. Of course, all medical dental, you know, maybe opticians, chiropractors, you know, physical therapy, acupuncturists, even yoga, Pilates studios, personal trainers. Again, I understand that these are fairly focused on providing services, so I, I am good with not having a retail space, but to at least include some of these, because they would be a good complement, complementing businesses to what I'm trying to do.
So, just so I can clarify, to make sure we're clear on the motion that may be made at a future moment, would you be okay if we limited it to these uses, just so you understand and we understand what we're approving tonight? Would that be fine?
You know, my title above says any wellness, health, beauty, and fitness services. So if we leave it at that, I'm good, because none of those include actually, you know, retailing products only.
And is that okay with staff? Is that verbiage appropriate? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that while we're talking about. Thank you very much. Please continue.
That's it, unless you have questions?
Do we have any questions? Councilman Will?
What is, you took the sheet away, so I can't see it. Chinese herbal medicine. What is that? Is that what it said? Chinese herbal medicine. Can you define that for me?
So, actually, my father was one of them. So you would use acupuncture, do trigger point, needling, acupunctures, and also concoct some of those herbal medicines, you know, which typically is made into tea for people to drink. So it's sort of a complementary type medical practice, and a lot of naturopath schools are incorporating those types of medical services nowadays. So when I say naturopath, actually, some of them would use Chinese herbal medicine practices. Does that answer your question, or do you have more specific?
I don't really know how to answer the question, because it's such an open-ended thing, and as I look at it on the internet, it's got some crazy stuff in here.
Gotcha.
So that makes me nervous.
I mean, trust me, if I had my first pick, it would be medical dental practices. So if you want me to cross that out, we definitely can.
Just, I mean, literally, the first thing I pulled up says harmful acids, fatal kidney damage, cancers. I'd rather pull that out.
Right. Yes. Again, you know, I wasn't asking for these things to be listed, so if we leave it as any wellness, health, beauty, and fitness services, and if you'd like to include there, except Chinese herbal medicine, I am okay with that.
Do we have, I don't, I don't know, because I'm still the new guy. Do we have the option of approving, of allowing staff to approve whatever the final tenant services that go in there?
We could make it a conditional approval, or something along those lines.
So it's for wellness services, but that has to, has to be approved by staff?
I would, I would caution against that, actually. I think that we need to have the condition a little bit more clearly defined.
Do you have a recommendation?
I'm trying to reconcile what I think you're trying to accomplish. So you, you have the concern about that particular use. Are there others that you have that concern with, that are in that broader description that she was outlining? I think if you-
Not specifically. I'm just, it, the, it seems like it's such a, I can call anything China, Chinese herbal medicine, right? Potentially, and say, well, it's approved.
I'm, I'm sorry, you think you could call anything Chinese herbal? Well, I just couldn't hear the last part of what you said.
Yeah, I just feel like it's such an open-ended thing to say it's Chinese herbal medicine. Well, what does that mean? It means anything I want it to be.
I, I think that we could probably come up with a, a condition that excludes that, while explicitly including the other service establishments, and staff would be in a position to interpret that when the time came.
Okay, fair enough.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Councilman Brady?
Well, first of all, I'd like to welcome you to the neighborhood. Bob Burgess, I think, was the only resident on, on Marietta Street for a while, actually on, on that street. So I've, I've replaced him as the only resident, so happy to have other residents kind of join Marietta Street. But I'm, I'm kind of drafting a little bit off this, as, as more of, I'm not sure, maybe of the office, restricting it just to medical and office. And I think that might accomplish your goal, and might ask staff to do that, instead of being so specific with wellness, because I'm a little concerned about wellness and just the broad expansive nature that that can be received upon. So I just want to make sure, would you be okay with just medical and office, just in that, in that building?
Um.
Because retail is very, very broad, and I just want to make sure we somewhat narrow that a little bit, to kind of still have you the, the ability to be able to operate, but somewhat protective of things that could go into under wellness.
Right. So when Mr. Woodman shared the conditions from the planning committee, I was completely fine with it, where it says medical and professional offices and retail services, which means I understood that a retail store wouldn't go in there. But now, you know, if we limit to medical practice, that, that is quite, narrows it down to who I can have as tenant, which is why I came up with the health, wellness, beauty, and fitness. So, you know, I would like to be considered for medical dental, any optometrist, you know, chiropractors. I mean, if you have specific concerns for some of these, we can cross them out. However, I would not, it wouldn't be my first choice to just for it to say medical office only, because there are dentists, you know, it could be yoga studio that would-
Ms. Chapman, let me, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think that's all covered under what we're saying, so I think maybe staff can provide that clarity for you. I think everything that you want is under that medical office that, that I'm talking about. I think, I think we, we can, we can ask staff to define that a little bit for you.
If we could. Ms. Woodman? Could you help clarify whether a fitness studio would qualify under that? And while he's preparing, I'll just say, my concern with the broad definition that was originally proposed by staff included banks and real estate, and that could be a traffic issue. You know, that building, while it might start off as a mom-and-pop, two-agent real estate or something like that, a successful business tends to grow, and our decisions stay. And so we wouldn't have another chance to come back and correct an issue, if there were. So I think we're trying to help you get what you need and figure out how to do that well.
Sure.
Councilman Hypes?
And to jump on the coattails here, could we not just have defined terms on this list, as opposed to terms that aren't defined in our code? Many of these are all defined or subsumed in our definitions, and therefore we've got some objective way of assessing it. But there's others on here that are categories that aren't recognized in our code.
Correct. Yeah, so under medical office, of course, dental would be allowed under that. The optician would be considered under medical office as well. Pet grooming, that comes under its own use in, in the code. And yoga, Pilates, the personal trainers, that all comes up under athletic facility or fitness studio. That is a separate use and separate definition in the code. I haven't had the chance to look at the Chinese herbal medicine, this is the first time seeing that. I'd, I'd have to determine which use that, that fit under.
It is not in the code.
That it is not in the code, no. And then, of course, the hair, nail salon, microblading, that comes under, part of that comes under beauty. of that comes under beauty shop, and then part of that may come under spa services, which would require a conditional use. That would not, unless council allowed that by right, that would require a conditional The hair and nail salon would be separate, uh, uses. Beauty shop and nail salon, those are defined in our code.
So in your professional experience, how do you think we come to a motion that helps this woman get her business underway and allows us to protect the neighboring properties?
Sure. Um, I mean, you certainly could add on to the last sentencing, condition one, where it says, if you are, uh, wanting to allow the retail service uses that the applicant is, is wanting, you could add on to the end of that sentence, such as, and then, um, list the hair, nail, that would come, come under, um, retail services. The personal training would come under the retail, uh, services. You would have to, if you wanted to le, let, allow the pet grooming, um, or the fitness studio, you would need to call that out specifically, um, in the, uh, condition.
I am perfectly fine to cross out pet grooming and Chinese herbal medicine.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this item, now is your chance to do so. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do you have a motion from council?
Yes, from Mr. Mayor, for a motion tonight to approve Z-24-10 Chapman 152 Marietta Street, as presented tonight, along with the changes Mr. Woodman presented.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel to approve.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I think I and Chris have a few concerns about what that was, as described by Mr. Woodman.
Exactly how he presented it tonight.
Okay, so the-
There were no changes made tonight. He just clarified in the-
As written in the-
As written in this.
So just as written?
As if.
No such as or exclusions?
Nope, nope, nope.
Thank you. I'm clear now, thank you.
It's what's in our packet, is the motion that was read.
I'm not going to add anything or take anything away. The definition-
It's what was advertised.
Can I second with a friendly amendment?
Drop.
I would like to add the list that she presented, um, and if you, if some of you aren't comfortable with the Chinese herbal medicine, we could take that out, or the pet grooming, take that out. But I'm fine with the list as presented, um, as, as an accompanying. I see no problem, I don't see it adding, I don't see it adding traffic. I don't see, you know, I think a lot of people use those things. They use herbal medicines and herbal teas, they go to acupuncturists. I think it'd be nice to have some of that in Alpharetta instead of having to go drive 30 minutes to it. So I'd like to add that, if you'd accept that.
Do you accept that? Second?
I'm not trying to restrict her. I'm trying to clarify that the sheet she brought up said professional services like these. But if we could do this, we're going to set a precedent that every time somebody says on personal services, but I want you to adjust your city definition to add all of these as well. I think if you stick with the definition of the city's code for personal services, it picks up a good bunch of those, and if she has a tenant that doesn't fit it, she can come back and ask for an exception, a, a conditional use for that space. Then she gets what she wants, and it's clarified, and we haven't muckied this thing all up with, uh, you know, a bunch of extra verbiage and, oh, it's not really a Chinese, it's a Japanese one or something, you know, I mean, just-
Right.
I don't want, I want, I want to give her the widest variety to be able to do what she can.
I do, too.
And I think sticking this list down there pigeonholes her to those, plus our definition, when we could be clean and just use our definition, and if something comes that's not on there and she comes into us and says, hey, you know, let's add this. We've done that before, so then that, that becomes a conditional use for a tenant, so.
Given that, I'm fine with, uh, a, a second then. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Were you all clear on the motion now?
Yeah, we're already in motion. We're voting, so we can't talk now.
Pardon? Were you indicating something?
I'm clear.
Okay. In discussion? All those in favor of the motion as outlined by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel, please vote yes, otherwise vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. Congratulations. So if you have the printed agenda, you'll note that the item I had mentioned that has been deferred was to be next, so we will not be hearing that next. So the next item up on the agenda will be E-24-04 Racetrack slash 2645 Old Milton Parkway setback and sign exception. Mr. Woodman, you're a busy man today. You have the floor.
The next item before you is an exception to allow for the construction of a canopy with signage for EV charging. Exceptions are requested to allow a canopy within the building setback and to allow an additional canopy sign. This property, I do have the location map, this property is located at 2645 Old Milton Parkway. It's on the southeast corner of Old Milton Parkway and West Side Parkway. Property is developed with a racetrack, gas station, and convenience store. And with that development, the front setback that was identified on that site plan along West Side Parkway was 65 feet. So this is the property in question. This is Old Milton Parkway here and West Side Parkway here. The, there are four existing parking spaces along West Side Parkway that the applicant is proposing to establish the EV charging stations and canopy over. The Unified Development Code limits the canopy signs to no more than one per street frontage, and there's already an existing canopy, gasoline canopy on the property, and it does have signage facing both Old Milton Parkway and West Side Parkway. That signage is limited to no more than 20 square feet. This is a street view of the property from West Side, and these are the parking spaces in question here. So you can see there's some existing landscaping in the area already, uh, providing some screening from West Side Parkway. And then this is the applicant's proposal. So there are actually five existing, uh, parking spaces that they would convert into four spaces for EV charging. This would be for the DC fast charging stations. The canopy would be outside of the 20-foot landscape strip that is required along West Side Parkway. And this is the canopy that is being proposed over this area. So you have the EV fast charging stations and the four spaces for EV charging. The canopy, the signage, there's only one sign proposed on the canopy. This, uh, sign would be facing Old Milton Parkway, and it's set back about 250 feet from old, the edge of Old Milton Parkway. The canopy is proposed to be 24 by 54 feet, and it is 24 feet in height. The applicant did come in with the face of the canopy shown in red and white stripe, like the existing canopy on the property. Uh, we did ask the applicant to do something that would kind of blend in with the surroundings. This tan color is used at the, uh, cornice of their existing building, so they use the tan color instead of the red and white stripe. The additional sign that they're asking for, the code allows up to 20 square feet. The applicant is proposing 16 square feet, so they are below the maximum, although they are asking for the exception to allow the additional canopy sign. Looking at the review criteria for an exception, uh, we see this as, uh, the gas station is trying to retrofit their existing, um, gas station with the EV charging stations. Uh, and so they, the applicant has stated in the application that they're just trying to provide the same, uh, experience for the EV charging customers as they do for the gasoline customers by providing that canopy. If approved, we are recommending that the canopy sign would not have, uh, an internally illuminated face. If you recall, we did make a code change that prohibits that, uh, in the city, citywide. The applicant did provide a citizen participation report. They, uh, stated that they had received no comments. We also showed this application to the public at the May 8th Community Zoning Information Meeting. There were two public comments with no objection to the applicant's request. And staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request, subject to the five conditions in the staff report in your packets, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Woodman? Councilman Hypes.
Uh, Michael, I was looking at some other, um, EV canopy charging stations, including the first ever by Racetrack in October of '23, and it has a canopy. Have we seen any side elevations, uh, of what, how the canopies will all look together plus the building? Because they'll have the existing canopy, so I'm looking right now at a, a rendering, but I don't see necessarily how it all fits together. It's on a very prominent corner.
Yeah, so this is, they did, there is not, other than this site plan, which is depicting this green area being the canopy, we do not have any kind of renderings or sightlines that show the canopy, uh, on the site. And again, this is just an aerial of the site, and the canopy is, is located at this location.
What I'm curious about is it, is it the same height? And I can ask, I can ask the applicant, but is it the same height? Is it going to be, you know, is it going to blend in with the other canopy in the building? Is it?
Yes, so the, this canopy is the same height as the gasoline canopy that you see here. It has the same proposed kind of mantered roof, as you see on the existing canopy on the, on the property, as well as the brick columns. Really, the only difference between the two canopies is this one will be a little bit smaller in, in overall size. The height is the same, it's 18-foot clear, um, so up to this point right here is 18-foot clear, and then with the additional, um, the roof area and facing, it is a total height of 24 feet. So this canopy is proposed to be the same height as the existing canopy, gas canopy.
When a car pulls in, do they, do they pull in between the, the vertical elements that are in, on, oh, the one you had right there, page four, slide that back up.
Yeah, so the cars pull into the spaces like this, and the supports are on the edges.
So, uh, is there, is there curb? Is there any landscaping behind it? Do you look straight through? What, what's the look from, uh, I guess that's West Side right there? Yeah, what's the look when you're stopped in traffic at West Side and Old Milton, and you look there? It's, it's a pretty nice corner right now.
Yes. So that's, that's the look at those parking, these are the, the four parking spaces would be right here. So what the applicant is proposing, so these are, they're utilizing these existing parking spaces here. There's a five-foot concrete, um, slab that they will add to the front of these existing parking spaces, which will have, uh, serve as support for the canopy. So they, the supports would be located in that area, as well as the DC fast chargers and the signage. The rest of it will remain as the 20-foot required landscape strip along West Side Parkway, and we have added some conditions in the staff report that would add additional landscaping, evergreen landscaping in that area to screen it from the road.
And my last question for you in community development, um, this may be, and hopefully will be, the first of many larger gasoline stations providing these, uh, type of services for our residents. Uh, is there anything about this ask that they need from council that sets a precedent that we need to be on the lookout for in other applications? Be it, be it the additional signage, or the location, the height, or anything? Because if, if others come forward and we give, and we grant the ask here, want to be able to look the next guy in the eye and say, we understand what you're at, you know, what, what they're wanting.
Certainly, and, and I think you bring up a good point, because these are, these are going to be existing built, um, locations where they're trying to retrofit those with the EV fast charging, and so certainly that, that precedence is, is a concern to us as well. Um, I think the biggest thing for us is that it was located outside the required landscape strip. I think that was very important. Um, they were only asking for the one additional, um, canopy sign in this particular case. Um, this is something we are trying to promote, the use of EV charging, um, at, at locations, and we do think that it will be more difficult to add these into existing sites, and that's, that's why we are supporting this, this except, exception. That fourth criteria for exceptions, where it's, talks about not being detrimental to the public, that's where we believe that we, we think that this request, um, meets that review criteria.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Excuse me, Michael, you go back to what you were saying a minute ago. So they're going to take another five feet out of the landscape there to add the concrete pads for the footings?
They are adding a, a five-foot, a five-foot section of concrete right in front of these existing parking spaces, but that does not encroach into the 20-foot landscape strip.
No, but it encroaches into the tree's root zone, doesn't it?
Well, it, it may impact some of this existing landscaping here, but that landscaping goes beyond the, the 20-foot landscape-
So they will, they will retain the, the city requirement of 20 feet?
They will, they will.
And then they say they're going to put up a bunch of screening, but yet they want another sign, so I just, I get, I start to wonder when we're talking about putting things up, but then planting things so you don't see them, but yet there's signs on them. I mean, that just doesn't make sense. If you're going to want a sign, you want a sign so people can see it, right?
Yeah, and, and they, they're not showing any of the signage facing West Side Parkway. It's actually on the end of the canopy here.
I mean, I'm not even worried about the signage itself. I just, it contradicts when people say we're going to add screenage, so.
I got you.
Yeah, I, I'm struggling without some elevation, so. Mr. Hypes had a good point, you know. Why aren't we looking at what it's going to look like? I know you don't have an answer, it's rhetorical.
Thank you. Councilman Brady, do you have a question for staff?
Yes, Mr. Woodman, when we look at, uh, from community development, when you look at a gas station, I mean, what are the rules on, on having a canopy? If you just look at a canopy, normally we want them to have one, whether you put the store in the middle or, or outside of it, well, one long one, or, or something like that, that usually the case. Removed from the street, access around the canopy, right?
Sure.
Is there any restrictions, what you put underneath that canopy? I mean, it's up to the operator when he wants to put gas or EV or something like that. Wouldn't that be his option?
Certainly.
From, from our perspective, just, I'm, I'm looking at this more architectural, more aesthetics and things like that, and also structural, there's one canopy, right? We keep adding canopies more and more, we can find ourselves in a situation where every gas station has multiple canopies, right? That we can control. What we can't control, what operator can control is what you put underneath the canopy. And that's, I'll make that kind of distinction about what we're looking at here is, it is more the precedent. I'm just wondering about this precedent, this starts, and then all of a sudden there's canopies popping up all over. There's no problem with EVs going in, I got a problem with the canopy. That's, that's, because structurally, that's the whole new, uh, piece on the property. So, um, have you seen any EV canopies in Alpharetta up to this point?
If, if we've rece, I'm sure that we have received them. I don't know, they, they've not required a public hearing, so I'm, I'm pretty much limited to that public hearing area of things. So there could have been something that complied with code and was met building setbacks, and therefore it was just, it was approved through a regular building permit process. So I'm pretty sure that we've had some of that. We did, we did, um, ask the applicant about, you know, why couldn't you have, you know, done a canopy in the parking spaces closer to the store, you know, to meet the building setback, so they didn't have to go through this process? And so we did try to encourage them, and the applicant is here and can respond to that question. I don't remember the exact response that they had to that particular idea, but certainly you make a good point. They could place, you know, maybe they could place EV charging under the existing canopy. you know, maybe they could place EV charging under the existing canopy. But the applicant is here and should be able to respond to those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Woodman.
Any other questions for Mr. Woodman at this point?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. The applicant would like to come forward. Now's your chance.
Good evening, Council. Christopher Light. I'm with the law firm Lipscomb Johnson at 112 North Main Street in Cumming. I have Charlie and Sam and an intern with us from Race Track tonight to help answer any of your questions. We do have a rendering to show you guys tonight, but let me start by kind of letting you guys know that, you know, Race Track is a leader in convenience and vehicle fueling in the region. This is an effort for them to be at the forefront of serving the electronic vehicles and pushing into that new market. This is actually the first RV offering in the state. They have an agreement in place with Georgia Power already, and it's called Make Georgia Ready.
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify. You said RV?
EV. I apologize if I did.
Okay. That's why I wanted clarification, because I'm seeing a bunch of big old.
That is probably the rea, no, the reason for the heights. Yeah, no, 18. Thank you. Their research has indicated this North Fulton area shows that there are the most electronic vehicle registrations in the state. So it's an obvious market in the tech leadership here in Alpharetta. In this instance, as Michael stated, this Race Track is requesting to retrofit an existing site. We believe that's the hardship. And some of the problems they had with finding the appropriate area is the National Fire Protection Agency has rules and regulations that have come out with these EV stations. They cannot be close to the gas canopies. Actually, I read some about it today. It's not the 20-feet requirement from the, from the gas, but it's how far the hose length is. So then it's 20 feet from there. So that limits you in, in the retrofitting of the site. I want to express and, and be sure to let you guys know that no trees will be removed. There's, the trees are grouped right there at West Side Parkway, and I think that it's going to nestle down in there. I've got a, I've got a picture to show you in just a second. This is a rendering we had done internally of what the canopy might look like from the corner of Bull Milton and West Side Parkway. I will tell you this, we've discussed the height issue. It is proposed to be the same height as the existing canopy, but they can lower this canopy to, to a 15-feet clear. And then that would be four feet on top of that. I don't think they would have to do the pitched roof mancered, if the city council would prefer it to be even smaller. So essentially, it could be 19, 20 feet total, or 22 or 3 with the, with the pitched mancered From West Side Parkway, this, like I said, this canopy is going to nestle into that grouping of trees right there. The planning staff is requiring other, other landscaping to go in that 20, 20-foot landscape strip. As you can see, from this angle, you can hardly see the C store. And I think that the canopy being nestled in there, and then going back to the previous picture, that's where the sign will be. And it's not rendered in there, but the blue sign will be right there facing that corner. But that's really basically the, the only view schedule you'll have of that.
While you've got that picture up, I'm just curious how the canopy is held up without any pillars on that corner.
I don't know structurally, but the pillars will be, you know, right. They're not on that, on the corner facing the C store. So structurally, they're, we've got some structural engineers here, so they might be able to.
Well, we're trying to understand the aesthetics, and part of it is, that's floating right now. And so I, I want to know what the obstruction's going to look like.
Yeah, well, the, the, so the pillars are, they're on the, the side of West Side Parkway. You just can't see them in this rendering from the.
That's fine. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, I'm just catching up. I'm going to tell you about the.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Sorry to interrupt. Just wanted to clarify before I forgot.
No problem. Yeah, the lower left picture shows structurally how it's designed. And then again, so with that, I'll, I'll, like I said, I have Charlie and Sam here with me to help answer questions that you might have, but we respectfully request the council approve the exception to allow Race Track to serve this burgeoning market in the EV charging stations.
Thanks, sir. Do we have any other questions? Mayor Protim?
Yeah. Step back up for him, please. I, I didn't get a sense of confidence when you said we could change the, the height of it. Are you, have the authority to do that? Or do you want us to table this and get it, get it approved from them? I, I think what you're going to see, if you get approval, it's going to be an adjustment. And I don't really want to be the one to draw the picture.
I understand. Well, we have approval for, from corporate, Race Track is a 15-feet clear.
Thank you.
So that's three feet less than what's the existing canopy is. Unless you didn't want to do the mancered pitch too, which would reduce the overall height as well. They don't have to do that. It just, it just goes with the aesthetic of the existing, to have it too.
Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you. Whomever would like to answer this, it's regarding number five. I, I don't know if the staff has asked you to remove the two trash cans on West Side Parkway, which is a good thing, because they never get emptied, and it drives me nuts. You've, you've done a great job on the gas station aesthetically, but why those two trash cans never got emptied is beyond me. My question is, what procedure or policy are you going to put in place to make sure the trash cans at the EV station get emptied on a regular basis?
Sure. We speak on the phone about that, or I spoke with some, I saw a staff comment with a code enforcement on the, and I spoke with them on the phone. And we sent an email, but Charlie, you want to come up and?
Must have been someone else.
Absolutely. Charlie Goldman, Race Track, 200 Galleria Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia, 30309. So we saw that comment about the trash cans, and the, the comment as well to just go ahead and have them removed. So upon construction of the EV addition proposed, we'll, we'll go through and take those out as well. Likewise, the store team has already been made aware that those trash cans are their responsibility. And I believe they've been going out there fairly consistence, consistently, excuse me, and clearing them.
Okay, all right. And, and so you all are good with the 15-foot with the mansard to match the existing canopy?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Mr. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if there's anyone here that would like to come forward, now is your chance to speak up. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor had offered a motion this evening to approve E24 sign exception with a noted change that the canopy should not exceed 15 feet, but we'll include the mansard.
I have a motion to approve by Mayor Protim Merkel, and a second by Councilman Mitchell. Any discussion? I'm all for EVs. I applaud you for getting into that business. We need them around here for sure. I'm not in support of more canopies like that, so I, I can't see how that's necessary. I'm sure it comes in handy at times if there's rain or something like that, but I'm used to seeing lots of EV chargers that are not built with a big canopy. I, I just, I, I go back to the point that Councilman Brady made, you know, we got a lot of gas stations in Alpharetta, and I'd love for all of them to put in AVs, but I don't want another, you know, 300 canopies up on Highway 9 and through downtown and anywhere else that they want to put in another EV station. So I applaud the effort to build the EV's charging stations. I, I can't support the canopies. That being said, the motion was to approve, and all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, otherwise vote accordingly. And the motion fails. Do we have a motion to deny? Councilman Will, you should certainly ask a question.
This is only about the canopy. They, we're not denying the chargers. Is that correct?
Correct. This, they're.
From my point of view, yes. I mean, I'm only speaking for myself, but I'm in full support of adding EV stations. Well, Ms. S. Wine is going to want us to vote on something, so.
I mean, it, it could be a motion to deny. It could be a motion with different conditions, if that's what you wanted, but there needs to be some motion that is approved, even if that is a motion with different conditions original.
I make a motion to deny the application as submitted. I'll second that motion. All those in favor of motion to deny, vote yes, otherwise vote accordingly. And the mo, not now, it's already been voted. So the next item up will be MP-24-02 slash CU-24-05 slash V-24-13, Tractor Supply Company, North Point Business Center, Master Plan Pod 7. Mr. Woodman, one last time at the
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The next item before you is a request from Tractor Supply Company requesting a master plan amendment, conditional use in variance, to allow Tractor Supply to reuse an existing 34,000-square-foot building on 4.6 acres in the North Point overlay. Building was previously occupied by Ethan Allen Furniture Store. Master Plan Amendment is requested to add retail establishment, mixed sales, and home improvement center as conditional uses in Pod 7 of the North Point Business Center Master Plan, and a conditional use is requested for Tractor Supply. And variance is also requested to reduce parking. And I do have the location map on the overhead. The property is located at 6800 North Point Parkway, south side of North Point Parkway, just east of Encore Parkway. This property is owned PSC Plan Shopping Center, subject to the North Point Business Center Master Plan Pod 7, which is designated office or freestanding retail no-strip shopping center. And it allows a variety of uses by right. Property is, as I mentioned, located in the North Point overlay. The North Point overlay, before I show you there. So this is out of the Unified Development Code. The North Point overlay depicts the property as a priority area for residential density. The property is located right here. And the North Point LCI discusses or recommends a balanced mix of national brands and local boutiques to support a successful redevelopment effort for that area. Tractor Supply is requesting a conditional use. They are a rural lifestyle retailer. They offer a variety of goods for sale, including clothes and shoes, fencing and gates, home decor, lawn care and garden equipment, outdoor living supplies, pet and livestock supplies, sporting goods, trailers and towing, equipment and tools. Hours of operation are proposed Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This is the applicant's site plan. So this is North Point Parkway. This is the entrance to the North Point Park Greenway Access driveway. So that is on this property with access to the property over to the north. As I mentioned, this is reuse of the existing, the former Ethan Allen building. The applicant is proposing a 1,900-square-foot outdoor, I'm sorry, display area. This is, this trailer and equipment display area would, is located on the west side of the, the building, and it would be covered and screened on the three sides. So this side, as well as the back, and then this side. There are 129 parking spaces on the property. Currently, the applicant is proposing to remove 25 of those parking spaces to accommodate the outdoor display area, as well as a loading area on the north side of the building. The Unified Development Code requires one parking space per 200 square feet for retail use, as well as, this is in the North Point overlay, so we do require a 20% reduction in parking. With the 20% reduction, this proposal requires 137 parking spaces. So that would represent a shortfall of 33 spaces on the property, of which the applicant is requesting a parking variance. The applicant provided renderings of the building. They are proposing some exterior changes to the building, mainly adding a water table, painted striping with the Tractor Supply branding, and then this elevation, which would be the north-facing elevation facing the North Point Greenway Access. They are showing a mural on the side of the building. The applicant also provided a trip generation report. They're estimating anywhere between 37 and 51 a.m. peak hour trips, and 79 to 165 p.m. peak hour trips. Staff looked at their trip generation report, and we wanted to compare it to the previous use of the property, which was for a furniture store. We estimate, our traffic engineer estimated that the proposed use as the Tractor Supply would generate 46 a.m. peak hour trips more than the previous use of the property, and 31 p.m. peak hour trips more than the previous use of the property. Then looking at the review criteria for a master plan amendment, conditional use in variance, we looked, of course, the LCI recommended that we find a balance between national brand retailers, is what, what you see out in North Point today.
You talked so much, you wore out the battery. I apologize for the interruption. We need the microphone, not just so you can hear, but for the public record, for those who may be watching online or later on.
We do, we do, do believe that the applicant's proposal would contribute to a further imbalance between the national and local brands for the area. Also, as I noted, this area is identified as a priority area for residential density in the North Point overlay. Also, the master plan already allows a variety of uses by right, some of, some of those uses, including restaurant, medical office, entertainment uses, and showroom. We believe the applicant's proposal would increase impacts on public facilities and services, such as transportation facilities. This use is also auto-centric. The location adjacent to the city's North Point Park Greenway access could, would impact pedestrian safety. We're also concerned that if there's insufficient parking at this location, that customers may utilize the parking at the North Point Park Greenway Access. The applicant did provide a citizen participation report. The report states that the applicant had received little feedback concerning the request. We did take this request to the Community Zoning Information Meeting on April 10. community zoning information meeting on April 10, and there were no public comments at that meeting. And then the item was considered by Planning Commission at their June 6 meeting. There were no public comments at that meeting, and Planning Commission did recommend denial of the applicant's request. And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Woodman on this item? Thank you, Mr. Woodman. Would the applicant like to come forward at this time?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. William Deal from the law firm Smith, Gambrell, and Russell, 1105 West Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia. Before I begin the presentation, I'd like to provide you with a document with some of the documents—or binder, excuse me, with some of the documents that we'll go over tonight. So if I can just have one moment, I'll bring that up to you.
How many pages is this? I don't even see it numbered.
I think it came to 381 pages.
Any reason y'all didn't give this to us in advance?
We—so, we're here tonight on the public hearing, which is the night we're able to present our evidence for the application.
Okay, thank you.
Largely—largely, this is in response to some of the comments that we heard from Planning Commission. So the intention was to address those, and those were prepared last week, and—
No problem. It's just a lot of data to drop on us in the middle of a hearing.
Understood. So I—as we're here, I want to go over some of what is in this notebook, just to kind of identify the particular documents that we have today. The first two documents are the regulations that exist that govern the land use regulations on this particular property. So in front of you, you have the approved master plan. You have the zoning district and the use table and a couple of other provisions from the UDC. The other documents that you have, Exhibits Number 3 and 5, are documents that were provided with the application, so those supplement what we have already provided and are actually mirror what was in your application or what was in the staff report. We—additionally, we have a traffic and parking study. The parking study was provided to Planning Commission, was done by a consulting expert who looked at the—both the industry standards and also some data specific to Tractor Supply, and concluded that the existing parking facilities are adequate, given the load that typical Tractor Supply companies' stores in the metro Atlanta area have. We've also provided a tree cover study. This is a survey just kind of showing where the existing landscaping is and how that interacts with North Point Parkway, and the emphasis there is just to make sure that we have—that we have additional screening and to see what this project looks like from North Point Parkway. We have the tax cards that show the appraised value. We also have a market study that was provided to show the feasibility of two particular types of development. So the first is concerning residential development on this particular property. We asked our expert to look at that and say, is there a feasible residential use for this parcel? His conclusion was that a residential use of the property would ultimately amount in a value that is $1.1 million less than the current appraised value of the land. That does not include the appraised value of the property. It's just the land. And then the second part of his conclusion was that the—a retail use that incorporates some local or boutique vendors and kind of subdivides this parcel would result in ultimately a $2.5 million—excuse me, would be $2.5 million less than the appraised value of the property and the building site. And then finally, we have affidavits from Robert Isaacson. He is a partner for the landowner. He gives a little bit of background on the tenant history and the history of this building. And then we have affidavits from James Hazelwood, who speaks to about the marketing efforts that they've made to market this particular property. And then an affidavit from Mark Frank, who speaks to kind of some of the market conditions, particularly as it relates to retail and entertainment uses in this area. And then finally, we have a structural engineer report that talks about what kind of use we can make of this particular property, given its structural—the existing kind of structural condition that the property is in, whether—he concludes that the property cannot be—we cannot add floors to this particular property because there is no—there's no support within the actual structure, and he also concludes that subdividing presents very large and substantial feasibility issues due to the structural components in the building, where plumbing is, where AC is, where the actual steel columns that support the roof are. So that is our—that's our textbook here, and with that just kind of background, we're all asked that that is submitted and introduced into the record of this proceeding. Moving then to the regulation. So this particular parcel, you'll notice we have a number of different uses that are—a number of different requests, zoning requests for you tonight: master plan amendment, a conditional use permit, and also a parking variance. And ultimately, what we're getting down to is operating a Tractor Supply company. This is all going to end up being kind of a buttoned-up version of their typical product. It's going to have less of an emphasis on the outdoor uses, much more emphasis on the household goods services. And so that's the product that I'm here representing Tractor Supply on tonight. The existing regulations on this property—so, this property is a part of the North Point Business Center Master Plan. That's a master plan that was developed around North Point Parkway and the mall. You see here that that master plan was divided into a couple of different pods. We are in Pod 7. Pod 7 only applies to our particular property, and you'll see as compared to the other properties within this master plan, we are isolated kind of by what eventually became the Greenway. So unlike any other parcel in this master plan, we do not connect to anything else. We have green spaces between us, which is both an opportunity in some ways, but also limits the extent to which we can kind of aggregate parcels and develop into a larger space. The master plan, like a lot of master plans in Alpharetta, provides for a certain uses that are allowed within this particular zoning district. The one that is allowed here and in fact identified as the primary use on this parcel is freestanding retail uses. And it's our position tonight that that is what we are proposing ultimately to you. Tonight, Tractor Supply is being presented. It is ultimately, at its root, a freestanding retail use. And that's what the parcel was developed for. That was what this building was built to accommodate. Built in 1997, I think Sears moved into the building to begin with. There was an appliance—they ran an appliance store out of that particular use, but then Ethan Allen took over the store and was there until 2020. And you'll see that Ethan Allen, for the last seven years of its tenancy, actually needed to downsize space, and so you'll see reoccurring throughout our presentation. The market is changing on this particular property, and the existing kind of furniture store was no longer feasible, and so ultimately, a new tenant is needed. So again, freestanding retail is what we're proposing, and we would say tonight that we have that permitted use, that your master plan already specifically provides a use that is permitted, freestanding retail, and we are proposing a freestanding retail use. Ultimately, staff has instructed us that we have to go through this proceeding, that we have to move forward on requesting a conditional use permit and a master plan amendment, and they've done so because your UDO has been amended to distinguish between particular types of retail uses. And in one of the earlier applications that you guys had, you kind of dealt with what those retail uses are and what those mean in application. And so the UDO now provides about four different types of retail uses. The retail mixed sales has been one that staff has identified that might be appropriate with Tractor Supply. There are also retail establishment, retail services establishment. What I think is important are two things here. One, freestanding retail is not a defined term. I think the clear interpretation of that is that it is an umbrella term. It isn't meant to incorporate all of your retail uses, and these particular amendments do not change that. The other important thing I want to note is that all of the permitted uses in the PSC zoning district, which is what our property is owned, all of those uses are conditional use. So we cannot make a single use of this particular property without going through the conditional use process. That is true here on the retail piece of this, just for the same reason that staff is asking us to make a mixed sales conditional use. That would also apply to any other retail use. And so we believe that—that this particular—that that interpretation is an unconstitutional use of the UDO. Finally, I want to note that these prior conditions and changes in the UDO do not modify the master plan. Specifically, that's provided for in your Uniform Development Code, and that's in Section 1.2. And that code says that nothing in the UDC shall modify or change any conditions on property that was zoned prior to the Development Code. Master plan, again, was approved in 1991. UDC was adopted in 2001, so our existing conditions still apply to this particular property, and we believe that we have those vested rights. So I wanted to look now at the application as a particular property and why we think, regardless of those other arguments, this is a good use. What we are proposing tonight is a good use of this property and allows us to make use of a retail building that's been vacant since 2020. You can see here, our building is centered there in the—in the slide. We are really in the heart of the retail center here along North Point Parkway. To the north and to the east, we have Dave &amp; Buster's. To the south and to the west, we have—I think it's the Auto Indulgent Spa. Surrounding us, we have Havertys. We have Ethan Allen, which located—moved from the building, downsized 22,000 square feet, moved across the street because they said the retail industry is changing so much, we cannot accommodate the square footage in this building. So again, we are in the heart of the retail—retail district within the North Point Parkway corridor. Our particular building is unique as well. Our building is 34,000 square feet of retail. It is one of the largest freestanding retail buildings that exist in the city. It is larger than the Barnes &amp; Nobles. It is larger than the former Total Wine. The only parcel that is bigger is the Havertys across the street. It is a big building, and a building that really requires a retailer that can both accommodate the inventory and also merchandising. And so the showroom uses that previously were made of this property have changed. These types of retailers, because of the growth of e-commerce, they no longer need stores that are keeping inventory and that are really expansive. What they—what they really need are smaller stores where people can come in, just see the offerings that are there in the store, and then typically, they order online. And so that was the reason why Ethan Allen moved. Ethan Allen actually looked for a subtenant for seven years, was unable to find that, and ultimately decided that they needed to move across the street. Tractor Supply, as I mentioned, the development that we have that we're proposing tonight is a buttoned-up version of Tractor Supply's current offerings. And what I mean by that is the emphasis is going to be much more on the home goods, sale of home goods, much less on what you may typically associate with Tractor Supply, the kind of outdoor landscaping uses that you see. Most of these—the merchandising, the overwhelming majority, is going to be centered within the existing retail center. We do have this additional display area that we have walled on three sides and then also roofed. That takes it out of the outdoor merchandising definition in your ordinance. We have a couple of improvements that we've made as we went through the process, had discussions with staff, and really kind of evaluated the site, and one is that we recognize that the Greenway is right there, that it is a connectivity point between North Point Parkway and the Greenway. And so recognizing that we have kind of an older and established retail building, we wanted to develop something that kind of eases the transition between this 90s retail building and the Greenway. The issue that we have really—the topography is difficult. You have almost a 30—35-foot drop from North Point Parkway down into the parking lot at the Greenway. So we think really, having a feasible kind of connectivity there is limited, but we certainly want to acknowledge and kind of ease those uses. And one way that we've done that is to incorporate this kind of landscaping and seating area that also provides for bike racks, certain facilities that can be incorporated, to kind of mix the two uses. We've also added a mural to the side of the building that is along the Greenway, and that, again, is to kind of help soften those transitions and to make the building a bit more welcoming to pedestrians as they see it from the Greenway entrance. And I will say, this mural that we're showing, it's conceptual only. It would go through your design review board, so we would go through that process. We're not intending to put this on the side of the building as you see it tonight. I think an architect designed it. We'd certainly have an artist that would put that together, put together something that the design review board feels comfortable with. This display area, I also want to mention that because we recognize, again, that this is a bit of a different request. We are proposing that the display area will be complete with masonry materials. It will have textures and hues that reflect and are consistent with a Tractor Supply. And again, that will be a covered facility, so it takes it outside of the way your ordinance defines the outdoor retail uses. And I mentioned that we have kind of an existing landscaping survey. This survey we did because we wanted to show kind of what exists now, what additional screening—what screenings exist and what additional screening that we can provide. So as you can see, this is a heavily wooded lot. The screening from North Parkway already is substantial, and we are proposing to add some additional landscaping that would help kind of any sightline from North Point Parkway toward that merchandising area. And again, those sightlines are limited because as you're coming west or east—or, excuse me, north or east on North Point Parkway, this part of the parking lot isn't visible. It's only visible for a very slight portion as you're coming south or west. It's only visible for a very slight portion as you're coming south or west. So again, those sightlines are very limited, but we're conscious of that, and we want to make sure that there's landscaping and there's screening that is incorporated. We also believe that this use is consistent with the LCI, consistent with the comprehensive plan. First of all, the comprehensive plan identifies the issues that retail vacancies present in this particular area. And so we have had a building that has been vacant since 2020. We have a tenant. It's a national tenant with a great brand and a great reputation. The LCI also identifies local hardware stores as what would be an appropriate use in this area. And while your definition section says that a hardware store is under 30,000 square feet, your UDO actually carves out and gives a different square footage in the PSC zoning district. So in the PSC zoning district, the hardware stores are max 50,000 square feet. And so, again, we are at 34,000 square feet, so we believe that we're consistent with that vision, consistent with kind of a neighborhood-oriented store and a resource that is available for the people living in this area. Again, recognizing some discussion that we have with the planning commission about what else could be used with this property, we wanted to show we have considered a number of options. This property has been marketed for retail uses. This property has been marketed for entertainment uses, for restaurant uses. We've explored everything that we can explore, that we can think of, and the only option that we have here is Tractor Supply. And that's specific to this particular parcel, and I'll walk through some of the reasons why. Again, we have a very large building, 34,000 square feet, but what's unique about the building is it doesn't have much in the way of street frontage. It has a relatively small area that actually is in front of North Point Parkway, infront of North Point Parkway. And these boutique retailers that the city is looking for need much smaller spaces. And so we looked here, city center, right outside the front door, has a great inventory of retail boutique, retail uses, that are local vendors, but all of them are in this kind of 2,000 to 3,000-square-foot range. We are 15 to 10 times larger than that. We also, these types of retailers need complementary retail associated with them. They need entertainment. Typically, they need housing around them, and this site cannot offer that. We have a very small site. It's surrounded by the Greenway. There is no way that we can provide those complementary uses on this particular site. And when we've marketed it to retailers, they've noted that. The property also has structural issues that keep us from subdividing. So again, I mentioned, there are steel beams that are already in this property that prevent us from really creating and carving out space in the interior of the building. Additionally, if we carve out space in the interior of the building, these retailers don't have street frontage. So you can see from this next slide, all of the front elevations of this building orient themselves toward this very large, central front door. That is not something that retailers can share, right? And it's because it's centralized, it means that if you're carving out additional entrances into this area, you're creating an imbalance and ultimately kind of creating one tenant that is kind of ancillary to the tenant that's able to use this large entrance in the front. And so again, that was marketed to retailers, and they noted, we don't really want to subdivide because we don't have the same access to parking. We don't have the same interior access, the same frontage access, I should say. Additionally, and this is a large one, the parking is insufficient for restaurant uses, for your other retail uses, certainly is insufficient for your entertainment uses. Parking lot is small. It needs a use that generates low parking activity, and Tractor Supply does. Again, the conclusions that are tracked, that are parking expert made is that this Tractor Supply only needs, the 98 spaces are sufficient for this particular use, and they have about 109 parks per hour. And then overall, people that are in the Tractor Supply are only in that for about 15 to 20 minutes. So the conclusion was that there was more than sufficient parking. And again, and I mentioned this, this is a part of our feasibility study, if this parcel were marketed, if we were able to find retailers, the conclusion was that what would happen is that we would ultimately have a valuation that is 200, excuse me, $2.5 million less. You'll see in the report that that also includes a significant amount of lead time. That also includes huge improvements that would have to be made, and it means that we can't use 16,000 square feet of this building. And so that's where that diminution in value comes. Again, we looked at restaurant and retail space. Again, parking was an issue, also ceiling heights, and this is a big one. We looked at Duckpin Bowling was one of the lessees that they had communications with. Pickleball. They all said, you've only got 16-foot ceilings. We can't accommodate our uses with that low ceiling. Also, there's a lack of kitchen uses, a lack, you don't have the grease traps, you don't have the plumbing that you need to incorporate some kind of restaurant use. Lastly, there's just already a demand for these type of, there's already, excuse me, an existing supply of these types of entertainment uses. Dave &amp; Buster's is right next door. Top Golf is in the vicinity. We have the Cine Bistro just down the street. Chuck E. Cheese is not far at all from this particular property. So that is a concern, and that's one thing that precludes these kind of entertainment uses. Finally, the LCI identifies this as a targeted area for residential, and we asked, we asked our feasibility expert, what would a residential development look like here? The issue that we have is our parcel is extremely small. We have 4.6 acres, but really, we have much smaller than that that's actually developable because of the hill that exists on this property. And so the developable space is limited. We also have an existing commercial building that would have to be knocked down. We've got a large amount of impervious. And so the conclusion that our feasibility expert reached is that the residential development would ultimately amount to $1.1 million less than the appraised value of the land. And again, that is because there is no residential that really fronts North Point Parkway in the way that we would with this same kind of proximity. We have a very small space that we are working with. The size of the lot itself precludes your mixed-use zoning district and hampers our ability to really create density to offset these development costs. I already spoke to the parking variance. Again, we had somebody look at this. Tractor Supply has a number of retailers that we looked at, and the conclusion was that the 98 parking spaces that exist per the plan adequate to accommodate Tractor Supply. Again, they estimated about 109 parks per hour. And again, that's supported by industry data from Tractor Supply, which details that the average time spent in their stores are about 15 to 20 minutes. So people are typically in and out of the Tractor Supply. Last piece, I want to address the impacts on the Greenway. Again, there is a very large hill that comes down from the parking area up to Tractor Supply, and we think that that hill, that the topography itself, is really going to keep people from parking down at the Greenway, coming up the hill. 37 feet is a long ways in that short little distance, and then to bring supplies back down, we just don't, we don't see that happening. But Tractor Supply will police that. We've said that we would sign, that we would make sure that that isn't happening. But again, we think that the parking is more than adequate, and we think the topography is going to police this as much as Tractor Supply could. And so that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Councilman Mitchell?
Could you define, you stated that you are a rural lifestyle retailer?
Yeah, so that is, that is from Tractor Supply's website. Tractor Supply typically has, they have a lot of stores kind of on the, they are suburban stores, and you can see from the traffic report that we have stores that are in Marietta. We have stores, Brazelton. They are suburban stores, but yes, Tractor Supply's market is a lot of landscaping, gardens, pet supplies, hardware. It does have a, an outdoor component to it.
And forgive my question. Are you with the property owner or are you with Tractor?
We are representing Tractor Supply.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that. Okay, I love Tractor Supply. I've been, I've been in them, and they're all in rural areas, but have you done a market study to determine that North Point Mall or even Alpharetta would be a good market center for a Tractor Supply store?
Absolutely, and Tractor Supply is very interested in this store, very interested in the underlying demographics. Again, this store will look, it will, it will offer, you know, your traditional Tractor Supply inventory, but it will cater more toward the Alpharetta market, which is a little bit different. And again, the emphasis was to move away from the landscaping materials, the kind of outdoor mulch and gravel that you would see at a lot of stores. So they are refining the product that they're offering, but they are very excited about this, about this store, very excited about the opportunity, and they love the Alpharetta market, and that's, that's why they're here proposing this.
I mean, I'm just thinking, most of my neighbors, and they have yards, don't even mow their own grass. I mean, I would say 80% of Alpharetta residents now have a lawn service that takes care of all that. I'm just, I'm trying to fit how the store that I love in a rural area would fit in a downtown, especially right in the middle of our LCI district, where we want it to be walkable and shoppable and where we have future plans for a mixed-use development. I'm trying to, trying to figure out how that would fit in.
Right, I think Tractor Supply offers more than just gardening or landscaping. They do have clothing. They do have pet supplies. They do have hardware. They do have tools. So it is, it is larger than that, but they think the underlying fundamentals are good, and they have stores that are performing in Marietta, kind of similar suburban markets as Alpharetta.
And why this one location versus like down the street where there's an empty box store near, near Lowe's and near the other competitors, if you're going to sell mulch and things like that, where you would be in close proximity of the competitors?
Yeah.
Why that location?
Well, we do have, we have a vacant box retailer here, and so the size of this site works well with Tractor Supply's demographics, but also, North Point Parkway is just, it's a retail corridor. The traffic that they get, the visibility that they get along North Point Parkway is unique, and they also can stand out from those other uses. They can provide kind of a hardware, kind of home goods store that is unique to North Point Parkway in that corridor.
Okay. And what, one last question. What are the goods that you would put in this fenced-in area outside?
Yeah, so some of them are trailers, and when I say trailers, they are kind of the smaller pull behind. There have been discussions additionally with some landscaping tools. Overall, it's about 1,400 square feet, so there's not going to be a lot, certainly not going to be a huge amount of inventory in there, but they will be goods that are sold from that particular. So it's not going to be storing, storing inventory. It is going to be goods, trailers, landscaping equipment.
For your internal use or?
No, 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 this is for sale.
For sale, okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not for this item, Mr. Mayor.
However, if there's anyone here that would like to come forward, now's your opportunity to do so. Please state your name and your address for the public record. And we typically limit public comments to three minutes.
Hi, Chris Recklow, 4145 Big Creek Overlook, Alpharetta. Been here for well over 20 years. So I too am a huge fan of Tractor Supply, okay? Been shopping there for probably 15 years. And in order to get my fix, I have to drive to Jasper or Acworth or, you know, any of the other locations. And I'd much rather spend my time doing other things that I like to do rather than traversing all the way across town to visit one of my favorite stores. So I'm a huge proponent for this. It'd be great. Be 10 minutes from my house. It's like a adult toy store. It's fun to go in there. So, you know, that's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Name and address, please.
I also like Tractor Supply. I'm supporting my wife for all the things, but I love Tractor Supply. I was looking for some tools the other day. I'm like, oh man, where's Tractor Supply? Across, you know, this area, I was like, oh, 10 minutes away, forget about it. So it would be great to have a Tractor Supply over here, too. Thank you.
And sir, if you don't mind us state your first and last name.
See, I even live with.
Thank you. My name is Francisco Piderita, 1060 Gramercy Lane, Alpharetta, Georgia, 30004. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else that would like, exercise their opportunity to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Meridoff, a motion this evening to deny the request for MP-24-02/CU-24-05/V-24-13. Tractor Supply Company, company, North Point Business Center Master Plan, Pod 7 is presented tonight.
Second. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel and a second by Councilman Brady that is to deny the item as outlined in the motion by Mayor Pro Tim. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please vote accordingly. And the motion to deny passes unanimously. So that'll wrap up that item. We'll move on to the next item, which is the fiscal year 2025 budget and millage rate. This is the third public hearing. So Director Harris, I believe this is your final opportunity to talk about the budget
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the third of three public hearings. Again, just to ensure that we are following state statute and allowing the public to come forward and voice any issues on our budget is the purpose of this hearing. Immediately after this, we will have the second reading of the ordinances related to the millage and the budget, but it's just open for the public right now.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
But if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this budget, now is your chance to do so. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comment. There is no vote on this item this evening. This is just for public opportunities to share their feedback. So that'll wrap up the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, and we'll move on to new business. Next item, or the first item under new business is the fiscal year 2025 budget ordinance, which is the second reading. Director Harris?
I'm going to go ahead and read it if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
If you want to go ahead and read it before he gets a chance to talk about it, you go right ahead.
An ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, adopting the final estimates of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2024, and ending on June 30, 2025, as its annual budget appropriating the use of funds shown therein, and as may be needed or deemed necessary to defray all expenditures and liabilities of the city for such fiscal year, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, Ms. Swine. Director Harris?
Again, good evening, to keep it short, there's only been one change since the first reading of the ordinance, but budget perspective was when I mentioned this morning at the second public hearing was that based on the city administrator's advice or on his direction, 79,000 that was set aside for an operating initiative for the admin assistant in the city administrative department has been removed as a, as an operating initiative, and those dollars were placed in a reserve account for future, pending future council action. It's the only change.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions? Councilman Will?
For clarity, what does that mean, reserve account for future action? Is it reserved for future employee or?
Specifically by action of the council.
Just goes back into the operating budget?
Yep, it's staying in the, in the general fund because that's where the proceeds were sold.
So just for clarity, again, why do we call it a reserve if we're just putting it back into the general operating budget?
Mr. Harris, before you begin your response, if you could speak up a little bit, we're getting some requests from the audience.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. We don't have a specific place to put it, it was in there for operating initiatives, new initiatives for council to use, and therefore, since it's not, it's basically adding to our contingency in the operating fund, which we do have a 1% contingency account in the general fund, and then we also are going to have this 79,000 placed there to, to stay in the operating budget for unforeseen emergencies. Now, by council action to the budget, you can move it to something, to, to something else.
As in operating?
Yes, correct.
Or not as a capital?
You could, you could move it over to capital and spend it on something, absolutely.
I'm just, I'm not being technical, I'm just, it's odd to me that we're calling it a reserve account if it's just going back into the budget.
It's a reserve, it's a reserve account in the general fund budget.
With no specific?
Correct.
Okay.
Let me try real quick if I can, Mr. Mayor, so it was originally in the budget, it was identified as an appropriation in the general fund.
Got that part.
When the appropriation went away, it is now unappropriated, it didn't change funds, so it stayed in the general fund, but it's basically 79,000 there that could be identified for a different recurring expense, or conversely, could transfer to the capital fund for a one-time project expense.
So it's an unallocated amount of money?
It's, yes, we, we took it from an appropriation and now it has no, now it has no defined source, so, to, to spend, so it, you know, it was identified in the first reading, now it's not identified, and I don't want to make it more simple than it is, but it's sort of like money back in the bank, and it can be identified for either a recurring or a capital project.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Director Harris? Thanks, sir. Ms. Shapiro?
We do not have any public comments, sir.
However, if you want to come forward and speak on this item, now is your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve fiscal year 2025 budget ordinance as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Brady, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel, and that was to approve the fiscal year 2025 budget ordinance as outlined in the motion. Any discussion? Thank you, Tom, we appreciate all the efforts that went into this, same with the leadership team and Mr. Lagerblum. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes, otherwise vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. Next item up will be the fiscal year 2025 millage rate ordinance, this is also the second reading. Ms. Swine?
An ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, to fix the adflorm tax rate of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, and for other purposes.
Thank you. Director Harris?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council, there's been no change obviously to the millage ordinance wherein we are stating that the general government, for the general fund, millage rate will be 5.01 mils, and for the debt service fund, it will be .740 mils, but again, no change since we've initiated the budget process.
Thank you, Director Harris, I do have a question, only because a few days ago, I did get a call from a resident who asked me if our millage rate had gone up because he received the tax documents from Fulton County, and I assured him that our tax millage rate has not gone up. Could you tell us how long we've had that same millage rate?
Oh, gosh, well over 10 years, I think?
Probably 12, something like that, yeah. Since? I didn't think it had gone up since I and Councilman Mitchell have been on council, so I know that's at least 12 years.
Yeah, 12 years.
You've been there longer than.
I'll go with 12.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was telling him correct information, because I know people get the documents from Fulton County and some of them freak out by the numbers, but the city of Alpharetta has not raised our millage rate.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have no public comment cards, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this, now's your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve fiscal year 2025 millage rate ordinance as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Brady, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel, to approve the fiscal year 2025 millage rate ordinance. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote yes, otherwise vote accordingly. And it passes unanimously. Next item up will be the request for proposals, this is 24-1005, On Call Survey Services for the City of Alpharetta, Director Sucevich, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, before you know it, is the, I call, I should say, land surveying services, this is where we're going to do our topographic boundary surveys for in-house design projects that we work on. We advertised for our proposals in March and April of this past year, received 16 proposals that came through, so very impressed with that, shortlisted down to six, and of those six, TerraMark was the highest rated firm based off of cost as well as their quality of the sample surveys they submitted. So this is a five-year on-call contract, when we need them to provide the work, we receive a proposal based off of that, based off their hourly rates.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions for Director Sucevich? Well done, thank you very much.
We have no public comment cards, Mr. Mayor.
However, if you want to talk about the surveying, now's your opportunity to do so. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I offer a motion tonight to cross the proposal of 24-1005, the On Call Survey Services for the City of Alpharetta.
I have a motion, do we have a second? I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel and a second by Councilman Will. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, sir. Next item up will be the resolution for Union Hill Park 2021 Bond Referendum Funds, Ms. Swine?
A resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, regarding the use of bond funds for Union Hill Park.
Thank you, ma'am. Director Rogers, you have the floor.
To give you a little background on this, Union Hill Park was originally built in 1995 as a special use, a special roller hockey use facility. The interest in Rocky and Rocky, roller hockey faded at Alpharetta. The new Union Hill Park was reimagined and a, and $325 million was allocated out of the 21 bond referendum. The renovation of the event venue was completed in 2023, and it has performed better than we had expected. With current onsite parking, the number of attendees is limited at 250. There is an additional parking of 72 spaces allowed on weekends at the business next door. Any larger events require shuttles and parking plans. And an alternative plan was developed that would add an additional 63 spaces onsite and allow for events up to 500 to be held with onsite parking, the remove, but, but required the removal of the small play area. The current design with the play area is estimated to cost $3.4 million. Currently, there is 2.5, 2.567595 remaining in the Union Hill bond account. The 800,000 needed to do this plan would be made up of either additional dollars or The removal of the play area consists of taking, of taking away from the plan two swings, three slides, a step play element, and a climb element, and the usual support amenities for a play area such as trash cans and benches. The alternative design has been estimated to be able to be built within the current budget amount, and this would include an additional $60,000 change order for the construction drawings and the design of the alternative, alternative design. The Recreation Commission on June the 4th voted four, four to three to deny the proposed Union Hill Park plan for additional parking and to modify the original design to meet the current budget figures. And that brings us to the day where the, you have the resolution that was requested at the original workshop. So I may, I'll be, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, could I continue on his presentation just very briefly, just because there's something we need to get onto the record?
Absolutely.
Thank you, in, one of the things that we have to make the determination of, because this is park bond funds, if we're going to even consider reallocating them is because what was designed in the very technical term but should be out there is that it's no longer feasible. And if that's the decision that the city council makes tonight, and it's a feasibility based upon available funding, that's perfectly good reason to have it not, no longer feasible, but we just need to say that that's the standard to be able to move these bond funds around if you all choose to do that tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for either Mr. Lagerblum or for Morgan Rogers? Councilman Hype, you have the floor.
Director Rogers, what type of events have we had at Union Hill Pavilion in terms of its progressing as an entertainment venue?
We've had a few, we've had, since the renovation, we have had several music concerts out there by Home by Dark, they do anywhere from one to two events out there a month. We have had, we have hosted the Shamrockin' for a Cure event that moved from the amphitheater to Union Hill, and we had the Atlanta Grill Fest out there about a month and a half ago. On the, on the event listing moving forward, there are additional concerts by Home by Dark, there are several family reunions planned for Union Hill, there is a, the Atlanta Symphony has booked a night.
Alpharetta Symphony.
Excuse me, I just can't, I, I did that in front of the whole symphony, just so y'all know, it was more, it was more embarrassing in front of the symphony than it was for you, if you believe that. The Alpharetta Symphony has booked a date there.
And they're, they're way better, I'll just say that.
And we also have a comedy night scheduled out there at Union Hill as well. We have a couple of family reunions scheduled for Union Hill, we currently are hosting the I Can Bike program out there, and three weeks in June, we hosted the Camp Momentum for Special Needs at Union Hill, so the event venue is getting a lot of use, and we continue to receive requests for that moving forward.
What other facilities does Alpharetta have for rain or shine covered, you know, covered roof events?
The, the only other event facility that is anywhere close to this size and, and the capacity is the Equestrian Center Pavilion that we have at Will's Park, but as, as dirt in it, you know, it doesn't do events very well, so it is really the only one with a, with a hard surface that has a cover on it that you could do rain or shine events, that you wouldn't want council because of the weather.
I've had the pleasure of going to numerous Home by Dark concerts at Union Hill Park, and I've also had the experience of skateboarders using the area adjacent to the pavilion, you know, right up until curfew at 10 o'clock. You know, can these two things really exist side by side? Can you, can you do concerts and paid events, because we, we charge for these events at Union Hill and, and have right next to it, you know, an, an active playground, skate park, because we're going to relocate the skate park to alongside the road, correct?
That's correct.
And I just, it's not a question, but you know, for me, I'm, I'm very committed to the city of saying we'll have that one skate park at least for our residents in the city. But as for an entertainment, rain or shine entertainment venue of this size, have you, have you heard of or encountered any complaints from people who use and rent the pavilion with noise right next to it?
We, we have, we have certainly had some complaints about the skateboard, skateboarders and inline skaters using the facility during a concert, because the noise, the, the skateboarding hit the ground and, and the, the communication between the skaters is often heard during the concert, so we've heard that, so it wouldn't, having an active space next to a concert such as Home by Dark that depends on the intimacy of the performer with the audience is something that you would probably not want to do, although I don't know, I can't think of any other complaints we've had other than the from the skateboard.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Director Rogers. Don't, when we put these pocket parks together that, that we have finished throughout the city, I've had the pleasure of doing the groundbreaking and ribbon cutting for one just down the street from this on Will's Road, on, what am I, Windward? Long night. On Windward, so there, there is a playground facility very close to this, correct?
Correct.
And what, do you remember what the cost of that playground was? I'm not putting you on the spot if you don't, I find, we all deal with all these numbers, but it was a big number.
Yeah, it was, it was a big number, but I can't remember it, Dan, off the top of my head, because that was, that was several years ago, that was really the first of the pocket parks that we opened.
It's beautiful, I think it's underused too.
Yeah, but so, I could get that for you, but I wouldn't even want to guess.
No, I think I've got nothing.
I mean, pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID.
Yeah, right, so they were, that's true.
Yeah, no, it's fine, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Will?
Morgan, just for clarity purposes, I want to be really clear with your answer here, are we saying that it is not feasible for us to do the original plan from a financial standpoint?
Yes, it is, right now, we would have to value engineer the current plan that, that, that.
And that is why we are requesting this change?
It's not the only reason that we're requesting change, the only, it's not the only reason that the request came to light, but it is, it is certainly a factor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rogers, when 70% of the voters voted on the park knowing it was going to have a playground and that we've advertised it having a trailhead as it comes in from coming, the coming trail, and it'll meet our trail, that's pretty significant to me. And with that, I, I know the other reason is because you've been asked to add more parking to, to this as an entertainment venue, correct?
I want to make sure I'm answering the right question.
You've been asked to add more parking as an entertainment venue?
Yeah, we, we, we were asked and we looked into additional parking, but before the ask, there was a need for parking because we were talking with the businesses all around and trying to make contact, so yes.
Okay, and that was my follow-up question, what had, what have we done to, to go to the? What have we done to go to the adjacent office buildings where there's parking that's not being utilized during the evening to try and acquire those spaces?
We've actually went to the company right next to us, ZK Teko, and we have a written agreement with them to use their parking on either Friday or Saturday night. It has to be after 5:00 on those two nights. But it's a tough transition from where their parking is, which forces people to walk all around all the way to the road and come back. So it's not as convenient as some folks would like for the parking to be.
But how many spaces does that add for people who are...
72 on their business, on the level of their business, 72 spaces.
So there could be more handicap accessible parking on the existing spots for people who have difficulty?
Well, yeah, you could, but you know, we will have as many parking spaces as were required based on however we redo the parking, because no matter what we do, we're going to redo all the parking at Union Hill. Whether it's added to or the original amount, it's still going to get redone, because it's turned the wrong way. And it's just not the right flow for the parking.
Okay, thank you.
And you made one statement at the first that the folks that voted on the bond, voted on the playground, that it had not, the park had not been planned when we voted on the bond.
Okay.
The bond simply says we're going to make improvements to Union Hill. The public hearings and the plan came after the bond referendum.
That's right. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that.
Mr. Lagerblum?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to ask that you postpone this item tonight. Hold on, I can't hear you. Red light's on. There we go. That, for once, was not my fault. I think I'd like to ask you all to postpone this item tonight, and let us come back to you on July 15th. And I want to tell you why. Is that there's some very specific things we have to do to be able to move bond referendum funds when they're within a project as was represented and voted on by the public. We do have to answer that question, is the playground no longer feasible? We have to answer that with a definitive yes. And we have to answer that that is, in fact, the only reason that we would be considering a modification to the park to change the use. And if we can't say those with certainty tonight, I don't feel comfortable. I'm advising you that we're in the best position for you all to take action. And the last thing I want to do is lead us down a path, or lead you down a path, that I, in my head, think may draw a challenge unless we've studied it, reviewed it, analyzed it, and presented it in conformance with what the law requires to move these bond funds around within a project. So if you'll be willing to defer this item or postpone it, whatever word you'd like to use, until July the 15th, I'd like some time to work with Morgan and his team to bring back a different presentation.
Ms. Aswin, how would you like us to proceed?
To postpone until the meeting in July will be sufficient.
I did want to ask the city attorney about those that may have come to speak on the item tonight. Before there is a motion, would it be appropriate to hear the public comment that came here tonight? I think it probably is, since they've spent the evening with us, so if we have public comments, to hear it. And then if you're willing to entertain a motion to postpone, I'd appreciate it.
Do we have any other questions for staff? Ms. Shapiro?
We do have a couple of public comment cards on this item. The first one is for Cheryl Rand, if you'd like to come forward. And then I also have one for Martine Zarinskas.
That's close, but if you'd like, go ahead and put your comments on the public record now, it's an opportunity, so maybe you won't have to sit through another four hours.
Thank you. I am Martine Zarinskas, 807 Willow Tree Way. I'm a resident of Alpharetta for over 22 years and live in the Windward community, which neighbors this park, and spent many hours in this park skating and all of the above with my kids. And I was a strong supporter of the bond. In fact, we worked on it together very proudly for our community. And echoing Councilman Mitchell's point, over 5,000 residents voted for the bond, and there were lots of projects on there. And yes, while it may not have spelled out a playground, it was spelled out that this would be an amenity for our community to use. And while I respect the rental income at the Home by Dark and all these other community projects that are using this space, I think as the community heard in the work sessions and the presentations, the opportunity to have an amenity that could be used by our residents in the playground and the skate park was very well heard by the people who attended. There were many great ideas shared beyond just a playground, maybe some cheaper, I don't know. But I do think having a park's bond approved for an amenity that can be used by all, all due respect, some of these events are $60, $70 a ticket. That's tough for some of our residents, whereas a playground is free, and it's unique. I ride the Greenway every week, be one of the few trailheads that has an amenity like that, and it will be really inviting for our community. So I want to think twice before you change it or alter it. And the other thing I want to mention is he showed a great picture of a playground. He didn't show the picture of the parking lot, what that is going to look like. So if it comes back to you, please ask to show the full picture of what you're thinking of, because I can tell you 49 parking spots is a big change from a green space with benches and amenities for our residents to use. And the other thing I make mention is on the minutes of the rec commission, which I appreciated, I read them all. Someone stated, and I apologize for not having the name in front of me, that they are not a recs and parking commission. They are a recs and park commission. And I understand that this is one singularly used to create parking, but I think the vision for the community was amenities that the whole community could use, not just those that are spending $60, $70 a ticket. So I hope that you guys consider diligently what can be done here and maybe some value engineering. Put it back to the community, see what they want. Are they really going to want 49 more parking spots for the one or two rentals a month? Not so sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
And those are all the public comment cards we have, but if there's anyone else?
Hello, my name is Carla P. Draita, and I have...
Hi, my name's Luciana.
And we live at 1060 Gramercy Lane. And I actually was that commissioner that said I have the pleasure of serving our great city of Alpharetta as a recreation and park commissioner. But I'm here today as a mom and as a citizen of Alpharetta. It is indeed difficult to park anywhere in the city of Alpharetta, whether you go to the Arts Center, and there's amazing gallery openings where you park at Alpharetta Elementary and walk a couple blocks. The same would be true going to the farmer's market or Ameris Amphitheater, where you're paying a great deal to park, and you still have to prepare and you still have to walk. And that's a beautiful thing in our city. My family and I, we use Union Hill Park currently. We go during the day, we do our little roller derby, we go in the night to Home by Dark. And I have never struggled to park at Union Hill. I am all about growth, but I'm also all about green and space that our community can use. Certainly, this would be the only playground on the Greenway. And Mayor Gilvin, you said tonight aesthetics matter, and a parking lot is certainly not sexy. My family moved to Alpharetta from Florida because of the many amenities that Alpharetta has to offer. We were not seeking a concrete jungle, or we would have chosen a different city. As the only playground on the Greenway, currently, we have to go up to Forsyth to Fowler if we want to use a Greenway as well as a playground. And that would be something very unique for the city of Alpharetta. Today, Alpharetta has over nine official music venues currently. I'm not sure if all of those are rain or shine venues, but there are certainly a lot to choose from. How that parking would be used is maybe on the weekends a few times a year, whereas a playground is used daily by grandparents all the way to children and families getting outdoors. Mid-Broadwell, that is a pocket neighborhood park that recently was built. And if you recall, the parking at Mid-Broadwell Park was next, because parking is very expensive to produce. And so sometimes, some of the bond referendum items have to be phased or tweaked to some degree, but really considering the benefits and the usage to the aesthetics and to our community and to the green space in Alpharetta. So how this resolution is currently written...
Just as a reminder, we typically stay to three minutes on the public comment?
Yes, Mayor.
10 seconds remaining.
I'm landing this plane. The first paragraph on the second page says that it would now be better served to be utilized as a parking lot. I just wanted to ask Luciana, do you think it would be better served as a parking lot?
No, thank you.
Thank you for hearing our comments.
If there's anyone else that would like to come forward at this time, now is your chance to do so.
I'm the one who submitted my card. Thank you, Lauren. And I just wanted to reiterate what Carla said, but I let her go first, because she's much better at that than I am. We told people we'd put in a skate park. When we showed pictures of what we were doing, we said we're going to have a skate park, then we're going to have a playground. The idea was that some of the moms who bring their kids for the skate park would have younger kids so that they could go to this playground. The playground would be something different. It wouldn't just be your normal playground. It could be anything, at this point, anything. And then there was the venue, and there's parking there. There is parking there now, and if they rework the parking, there'll be more parking there. And Morgan's found a way to get even more parking from the people next door. And I think that in the area, there's even more empty parking after 5:00 on Fridays and Saturdays. So maybe Morgan will work his magic and find us more parking, and people can just walk. You know, they can just walk. And if they can't walk, maybe, I don't know, something creative could be done for the people who can't walk. They park here, and the people who can walk come from a distance. It's just, really, do we want to spend our bond money building more parking? And if we don't have the money to put in the playground, the trouble is, is if we spend money on parking, we will never get a playground. So I know there's been talk, well, if we don't get it all now, we may never get it, but maybe we just leave it and do the playground when we have the money, if it can't be found, if we can't value engineer a playground in. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And Morgan, just to clear up a couple of things, because I want to make sure all of us are on the same page. Were the playground and the skate park part of the proposed bond issue?
Mr. Mayor, what I, my understanding is, let me get to the sheet of paper, is that it was not part of the question that appeared on the ballot.
Okay, I just want to make sure, only because, you know, they're saying that people were promised it and things like that. I wanted to make sure that I wasn't confused, that that's not what people voted on. That doesn't mean that people didn't expect it or whatever, but I just want to make sure I'm...
Sure, and I have that question as it appeared, and it just...
I thought that was the case. You touched on it earlier, but I wanted to make sure that I'm not mistaken, because I certainly understand the legal and the emotional and the practical. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify that standard just briefly. So while it may not have been in the ballot, in the question, in the referendum, the state law governing this provides that if there was anything published in the materials given to the public in anticipation of the referendum, that then is considered part of it.
So let me revise my question.
Yeah.
Was that anything that was publicly...
I don't think I qualified to answer that question.
Okay, well, I'm not going to beat a dead horse tonight.
Yeah.
We need to know.
We will look into that further.
Thank you. So are we just going to defer that?
If somebody would make a motion to postpone to July 15th, I would appreciate it.
Motion to postpone until July 15th.
I have a motion by Councilman Hypes, seconded by Councilman Will, to postpone further discussion on this until July 15th. Any discussion?
Yes, please. There were visual images of the parks sent out in the media. We'll have to find some of those placards that were sent out as advertisement that became part of the public record. And I do believe that it was sent in expectation of what they could expect. And to me, that's important, because while it may have not been on the actual voting ballot, it was a part of the conceived concepts for these parks. So that's all I wanted to say about that. Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. So we'll have this discussion again on July 15th. The next item up on the agenda is the Intergovernmental Agreement, Fulton County Schools and City of Alpharetta, Recreation Parks, Cultural Services for Community Agricultural Programming. Director Rogers, once again, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were asking for consideration of approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Fulton County Schools for Community Agricultural Programming. This MOU would cover Cambridge High School, Alpharetta High School, Milton High School, and Innovation Academy with various programs that we are doing with the school at both the school location and at the old Rucker Farm location. For the sake of brevity, I will stop there and ask if there's any questions about the MOU.
Does anyone have any questions about the MOU? Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, want to speak on this item, now's your chance. We'll close public comment. I have a motion from council.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that council approve intergovernmental agreement with Fulton County Schools for Community Agricultural Programming.
I have a motion by Councilman Hypes to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Hypes, seconded by Mayor Protem Merkel, to approve the intergovernmental agreement, Fulton County Schools and City of Alpharetta, as outlined in the motion by Councilman Hypes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. Thanks, sir. Next item up will be the Request for Proposals 24-118, Pool and Fountain Maintenance Services. Director Rogers, you're a busy man this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're asking consideration for approval of a contract with DC Pool Services for the maintenance of all of our pools and our fountains, and that includes the Will's Park Pool, the fountains at Brook Street Park, Town Green, Maddox Park, North Main Street, Canton, Old Canton Street Park, Roslin, Old Roslin Street. And this is a five-year agreement. We did an RFP. We received three proposals for those. Those three were evaluated based on chemical product, material safety data, methods of service, project approach, qualifications and experiences and references, and cost proposal. DC Pool scored the highest. They scored an 84.7 on that, and staff is recommending approval of the contract with DC Pools.
Thanks, sir. Do we have any questions? Councilman Will? Councilman Will?
Morgan, the motion is for sixty-six thousand, where is that at? Seven hundred and fifty dollars. But if I go to the Pool and Fountain Maintenance Services scoring summary, it says their price is a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven sixty-two. That's a big disconnect.
Uh.
It's on the scoring summary page.
Um, I'm going to have to check that out. I don't, I don't, I think my notes tell me it's sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I, I would ask the city manager for some clarification.
Councilman Will, where are you looking exactly? I'm sorry.
If you look at RF, the, the scoring summary, uh, I meant addendum that's attached to.
That's the, the one with several blue boxes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Where are you looking?
If you look at the DC Pool Services, all the way to the right, it says he scored twenty-seven point nine six.
Yes.
For a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven sixty-two.
Thank you.
I don't know if I can remedy that on the fly. Everything I'm pushing doesn't show me the number. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, we may be able to get this one done tonight if, if we just want to continue on on the agenda. If this just tables, we could bring it back off the table before the night's out if I can find the answers. We're sitting here working on other items.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to table this item until later in the meeting?
Motion to table this item until later in the meeting.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hypes, second by Councilman Mitchell. All those in favor of tabling this item until later in the meeting?
I think I know what the. Go ahead, and I'll make sure I know the answer before, uh, before we come back.
Also note for the record that Mayor Pro Tim Merkel had to leave, so he won't be able to stay for this item or the rest of the meeting.
Actually, I think I may know the answer to the question, Mr. Mayor, if we can clarify it now and move on.
Sure?
I think I do, yes.
Okay.
Because that looks to be an annual number for the contract, and that will be the balance of what exists. Basically, half of the total contract amount is the balance of what exists in this annual year, so it's worth pushing July the first. So if a total year cost is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, it would sound reasonable that what we're seeking for tonight is just the balance of this calendar year. And I believe those numbers work at sixty-six, seven fifty.
Yeah, it says sixty-six, seven fifty annually.
Yeah, so then it's on the calendar year. Yeah. We're on fiscal year, so I think that was what it said.
But it still says annually.
I know, but that's twelve months. Sixty-six thousand.
Yeah, the hundred and twenty, yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead with your motion to table because, uh, I think I can make those numbers work, but I'll, I'll confirm.
Maybe it's a typo, but that does change the whole thing.
You did vote it by.
Yes, sir, it did.
So let's move to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind to turn your microphone on over here.
I'm not loud enough for that. Let's try this all over again. So the next item up will be the Resolution 2024 Bulletproof Vest Grant Application. Director Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are, uh, asking for approval for resolution to support submission of 2024 grant application to DOJ to purchase ballistic vests with authorization from Mayor to execute all necessary documents. Basically, we're looking at, uh, a match of thirteen thousand, five hundred from DOJ, which the city would match for a total of twenty-seven thousand, which would purchase thirty vests at nine hundred apiece.
And if Ms. Swan could read the resolution, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Swan, would you please read the resolution?
Happily. A resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, authorizing the submission of the 2024 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Application.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment cards?
We do not.
However, if you'd like to speak on the Bulletproof Vest, now's your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. I have a motion from council.
Mr. Mayor, uh, make a motion to approve a resolution to support the submission of the 2024 grant application to the US Department of Justice to purchase ballistic vests and with the authorization from Mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Will, second by Councilman Hypes. Any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously, so we'll move on to the next item. PH dash two four dash one four, City of Alpharetta Capital Improvement Element. Ms. Swan, you'll read the resolution, and that'll give us an opportunity to get Mr. Cook up.
A resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, for the adoption of the fiscal year 2023 Capital Improvement Element and Annual Report.
Thank you, Ms. Swan. Director Cook, you have the floor.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we're just looking for consideration of an adoption of a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2023 Capital Improvement Element and the annual report. Back in May of this year, council approved for us to submit that to, um, the Atlanta Regional Commission, so, uh, we're looking for that final approval.
Thank you. Director Sasevich, I just have one question that I thought of as I was reviewing this again today. At one point, we had talked about getting a project on Canton Street, the sidewalk, Stormwater Project, on a list. Is that on this list?
There's, there are two different lists.
Okay. Is it on a list yet?
The project you're referring to is actually was one of the, um, projects listed in the capital budget for consideration.
Okay, I, I thought so, but I wanted to make sure it was on a list, not just budgeted.
This is a planning list.
This is, this is our impact fee statement for what we gave impact fees for last year.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for staff? Anyone wanting to come forward and speak on this item?
We had no cards on this item, sir.
I assume not, but I figured I'd just ask in case. I'm going to ask anyway, so. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve PH twenty-four dash fourteen, City of Alpharetta Capital Improvement Element, CIE, um, for the fiscal year 2023 Capital Improvement Element and Annual Report.
I have a motion by Councilman Mitchell. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Will. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes, otherwise vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. So we'll move on to the next item, and the next item is the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Alpharetta and the Development Authority for Tech Alpharetta Funding. Director Cook, once again, you have the floor.
Mayor and Council, this is consideration of approval of the inter, intergovernmental agreement between the City of Alpharetta and the Development Authority for Funding of Tech Alpharetta. It's in the amount of ninety-five thousand, and it's for the next year. And just like last year, this will be done in twelve monthly installments if it's approved, um, and it carries a one-year financial commitment that's set to expire at the end of the next fiscal year. And then Karen Cashin is here, the CEO of Tech Alpharetta, to give a brief update on the progress of Tech Alpharetta. And of course, if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer those before she comes up.
Any questions for Director Cook? Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Um, I'll, I'll try and keep this brief, given the lateness of the hour. Um, I understand you all do have the package in front of you on your screens. Um, I was going to also put it up.
Technical difficulty trying to get on the internet for some reason. I'm on the guest public network.
Sweet guest, yeah. Why is that not? Sweet guest is open. Good there.
If not, it's okay, I can just go off my slides.
You're more than welcome to. I don't know why. Let's just see what happens.
Okay, well, I will go ahead and proceed. Um, we won't be able to show my slides up on the screen, unfortunately, um, since we're not able to get the connection to work. But I do want to introduce you all to our treasurer of Tech Alpharetta and our, uh, he's a senior VP at Bank of America. He has been before you all before. Mackenzie Tompkins here this evening, who will be presenting with me. Um, and I know we have a couple of public comments coming as well. So as you all know, we're, we're now in our eleventh year of existence. Um, our mission has stayed the same, um, since our organization was first created by the City of Alpharetta back in 2013, and, uh, that mission is to help grow more technology and innovation in the City of Alpharetta. Um, our value proposition is on the slide as well. We build Alpharetta's reputation as the destination of choice for tech companies and tech professionals. We help tech companies of every size, from startup to enterprise, optimize their potential, foster the education and development of talent, cultivate business networking and connection, and drive investment to enhance Alpharetta's vibrant tech ecosystem. And, uh, as, as you all know, we do that in a number of ways, uh, the most visible of which is our tech startup incubator that's been open since 2015, um, in the building behind the fire station on Webb Bridge Road. We also run a series of events for area tech executives on a monthly basis, um, to help connect area executives of, from businesses of all size, startup through enterprise. We have a board of thirty-five, as of December 2023, thirty-five, uh, senior tech executives from companies throughout the community, as well as business executives. And we just this year rolled off our Tech Alpharetta Women's Forum Successful Team Mentoring Program into its own 501(c)(3) nonprofit, um, and are expanding that now to serve thirty-seven high school students at the Innovation Academy High School this fall with thirty-seven female tech executive mentors. So we have a lot of exciting things going on. Um, and, oh, thank you. Go back one more. There we go. Um, thank you so much, Dean. So, uh, from the startup standpoint, you can see the stats shown up on the slide. Um, we currently actually today have, have, and that number is incorrect, it's now fifty-six tech startup company members of our incubator. We have seventy sponsors, um, and really dozens of partners from throughout the metro area ecosystem, um, that have enabled us to, uh, help build our brand exposure throughout the ecosystem. Um, our tech startups represent all industries, um, most of them are software developing startups, but we also have med device and a few biotech. We are one of the five major metro area startup incubators. We've had twenty-one tech startup graduates with more to come this year. Um, and, uh, the number, actually, I need to update the number because our startups have received more than two hundred and thirty-two million in investor funding since the incubator opened in 2015. Um, and just as importantly, we've created fourteen hundred and fifty-two, these numbers are again December 2023, fourteen hundred and fifty-two new tech and service industry jobs created for Alpharetta by our twenty-one graduate companies, and a total of two thousand and sixty-four total new jobs created for the state of Georgia since the incubator opened. Um, and we've been partnered with the City of Alpharetta, uh, since this organization was created, and, uh, we absolutely appreciate that partnership. Next one. Um, I listed a couple of, just a few of our, uh, tech startup success stories from our incubator, um, who have raised funds, uh, grown to a significant number of employees or both, uh, Variable, Voxi, Rally, Innoviant, Finosec, um, ranging from, uh, eight employees up to twenty-four employees, um, with very successful raises, all headquartered now, uh, in the City of Alpharetta and continuing to expand. And, uh, I think everybody knows Data Seers, probably our biggest success story graduate. Um, they have headquartered, they've had to move five times as, as they have grown an Alpharetta fintech company. They now have more than eighty employees onsite in their Alpharetta office, um, which is a tremendous story, forty more employees in India, and three-year revenue growth of four hundred and twenty-seven percent. So, um, every bit that's important to us is helping the startups to grow, is the jobs creation aspect of what we're accomplishing in our incubator, because as these companies grow and headquarter in Alpharetta, they continue to create new tech companies and new jobs in the City of Alpharetta. And in that regard, we truly are a tech economic development engine. Our, uh, fall 2024 relocation to, to commercial office space, which is going to include more offices, is going to help us to serve even more startup companies by having those additional offices, since offices have been in great demand, especially over the past two years. And, uh, the thriving tech ecosystem and opportunities for engagement continue to attract more tech companies and help to retain the ones that are already here. You can see the list of just a few who are involved as board members, um, on our Tech Alpharetta board. And we also continue to be involved with working with the city's economic development team on recruiting activities, giving tours to prospective companies, and retention activities. We, also, one of the ways in which we're helping to continue to build the tech ecosystem here is by creating connections for Alpharetta to be seen as a tech center, whether it's through our events that serve more than two thousand tech execs, uh, per year of every size. Our incubator, uh, we have two to three startup meetups per week, um, a contact list of five thousand tech executives, and thanks to our board, a, uh, tremendous group of mid-market and enterprise companies that are ready and willing to meet our startups and see how they can help. Uh, you can also see the impact of the substantial PR that we continue to engage in across the ecosystem. Five hundred and sixty news articles mentioned Tech Alpharetta last year, forty-one million three hundred and six thousand, three hundred and forty-five media impressions in 2023, and ninety weekly Tech Alpharetta newsletters sent out to our contact list of more than five thousand executives. Um, so we keep very busy. We do have the smallest staff of any of the area incubators, um, but we do much with the staff that we have. I'm grateful to have them, and, uh, you can also see on the next slide, our board makeup as of the end of 2023, uh, the board companies' level of financial participation. Hundred percent of our board companies were sponsors again in 2023. Eighty percent, eighty-six percent of them were cash sponsors. The level of financial participation has continued to climb to over two hundred and that, over two hundred thousand in board companies' financial participation in 2023, up from seventeen thousand, five hundred in 2018. And I'll turn it over to Mackenzie to cover our recent financials.
Thank you, Karen, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to continue, um, just regarding our financial position, as you can see, this is a snapshot from 2017 and now, uh, forward all the way to '23, um, some of which has actual and, um, projected. But the, the thing here is, as you can see, the, the comp, the, the board, excuse me, the organization as a whole has continued to grow in sponsorships, sponsorship revenue, uh, and also your continued support. So as you can see, the, the court, the correlation between sponsorships and everything that Karen mentioned really is, is presented here in the, the numbers from, from revenue generated to, to EBIT. So, um, we want to continue that, um, in, in this year, and, and your support is, is a really, really strong part of that. Um, and, and with that, um, I just want to reiterate the, the public-private partnership, uh, and just how important, uh, with our current move for this year and, and just your support over the years and, and continued support will help us continue the mission and, and drive the tech. will help us continue the mission and drive the tech ecosystem here in Alpharetta. So, we really, really appreciate your support and hopefully we can continue that.
It's okay. Okay, everyone, that was our last one, right? Yeah. So, with that, I wanted to see if anybody had any questions about our slides or what we're currently working on.
Councilman Hypes.
Yes, good evening. You know, we do this every year and it's always good to see everybody come back. I will say at the outset, every year I've asked for P&Ls and balance sheets and it's always, you know, we'll get those to you. I think for four years I've not had those provided. So, but I see from the intergovernmental agreement that this $95,000 is for one year's, to partially support one year of compensation for the CEO. So, the ask here is money for CEO compensation. What is the projected total compensation for the CEO?
As of, do you want to, okay. As of this year, the total salary of the CEO?
Compensation.
That number varies because part of that is based on commission.
Yes, ma'am.
Based on sponsorship sales. So, it's going to vary from year to year depending on the success of sponsorship sales. The way the contract was originally drafted by the city's Economic Development Director in 2017 was to put a cap on commissions at $60,000.
What's the projected compensation for the CEO this year?
Well, we can't answer that because we're about to start having to pay commercial rent for the first time.
No, maybe I didn't state it clearly. For the year that's ending up, I'm aware of a number like 232,000. Does that sound correct?
I'm talking about for 2023, we're on a calendar year, not a fiscal, not the same as the city's fiscal year. So, I could give you 2023. I believe with the full commission that was earned last year, it might have come to 223.
Okay, that's what I was seeking. I was trying to find out, there's an ask for, to supplement CEO compensation. For me to process it, I need to know what the CEO compensation is.
Yes, and the city's generous support over the years, that number has always been, as part of the contract between Tech Alpharetta and the CEO, that number has always been conditioned to be part of the CEO's salary. So, that is the same as it has been since 2018, I believe.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions?
Councilman Brady, just talking a little bit. Is it the CEO's responsibility then to grow the organization that's no longer dependent upon $95,000 a year?
Actually, we are still very much dependent on the $95,000 a year, especially since we are now taking on a tremendous commercial rent obligation, starting with our move this fall.
I think you misunderstood my question. Is it the CEO's responsibility to grow the organization that it no longer needs $95,000?
We're trying to grow the organization as much as we possibly can and if and when we reach a point where we no longer need the $95,000, we would absolutely make that known to the city.
So, it's a very targeted question I just asked. It's not a "we," it's a certain person, their responsibility and their leadership and their expectations going forward. That's really what we're looking at. Certainly for me, from the finance side, I always look at that.
Sure.
It's like, where do you anticipate the organization to grow? Like, if compensation's grown, is the ROI coming back on the organization? Are you growing the organization the right way? Are these things in place? It's standard checks and balances of any organization and any CEO on an annual basis has to talk about that. So, I think it's a valid question.
Yeah, I think that's a fair question. And I would say, in the future, I think that is the goal. We understand that we're obviously relying upon city taxpayer dollars. So, we understand that and we're making strides to hopefully get to a point where that is, I mean, we'll take it, of course, but where we're self-sufficient, self-sustaining. That ultimately is the goal. But as of right now, it is definitely needed, so I want to be clear on that. But the goal is to get to a point as we grow, as we move into this new space and determine and figure out additional ways to generate revenue to hopefully get to that point.
So, your $479,000 in expenses that you're recording, 232, I guess, is compensation to CEO. What's the remaining, what's the next line item, the largest line item? Since we don't clarify visibility in your P&L, you're not sharing that. What would be the next line item in there that is your biggest cost vehicle?
So, we have other contractor expenses. Obviously, rent this year is definitely going to be a contributing factor.
That wasn't last year, so I'm talking, you know, your last year. You've been in this 450 cycle, so I know you're just moving now. So, I'm not trying to talk about forward. I'm kind of a little more the rearview mirror.
Last year?
And you know, it's okay, because I know the evening's getting late. But I would ask this, it'd be great if you guys could show your P&L. Because I can tell you, next year, this would be a whole different conversation from me personally, prospectively. If there's not visibility into it, it's going to be a little bit of a harsher conversation. So, I'll let it drop from here of respect for everybody, but I appreciate that.
Any other questions? All right, Ms. Shapiro?
We have no public comment card. Oh, we do, pardon me, we had one late addition to the comment card.
I was pretty sure I saw somebody walk up there a little while ago.
My apologies. It is for Julie Haley, if you'd like to come forward. As a friendly reminder, we do try to limit comments to three minutes.
Good evening. Julie Haley, 165 Cummings Street. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman. My name is Julie Haley. I'm the CEO and co-founder of Edge Solutions. We launched at my kitchen table 16 years ago and today we're headquartered on Old Milton. And we have 57 employees, enterprise-level clients all over the United States. And last year, we did 87 million in revenue. It hasn't always been easy. We've had many sleepless nights. How are we going to make payroll if we add another network engineer? And can we afford the rent on this building with parking? And what Tech Alpharetta Innovation does is to help startups with these pain points that crush the majority of startups in the United States. A huge part of our success was the relationships and the partnerships that we have built with our fellow Tech Alpharetta companies like HP, Microsoft, Equifax. And by supporting Tech Alpharetta, you're building a tech culture for us where we meet, collaborate, innovate and support our fellow tech companies. Every dollar you invest in Tech Alpharetta, the Innovation Center expands our tax base and creates job, many jobs. There's a reason that there are now 750 city-based incubators across the United States because it's a great investment for cities. They're all, they're all supported by their cities. None are self-sufficient or big corporate sponsors that bear their names, like MedLife Tech Stars and American Express Innovators. Morgan Stanley has one, but we don't have that big-name thing. We are very dependent on you and we are very appreciative. Each year, Karen's done a great job of bringing in more and more corporate sponsorships, but we still need your help. We're now expanding and growing our incubator out of its crib, the fire station. And now we have a real office that we're going to have to pay rent for and continue to grow. The tech community is driving growth in business creation, employment and brand recognition for the city. Tech Alpharetta is the signature platform that brings it together. We really appreciate your continued support as we continue to grow. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Now is your chance to do so. You've heard it a bunch, but name and address for the record, please.
Sorry for getting here too late to have a card turned in. Eric Pritchett, I'm over at 3435 Newport Bay Drive, 30005, here in Alpharetta. I've seen Councillor Hypes over at the center on several occasions. So, thank you, mayor and everyone, for your support of Tech Alpharetta. In 2020, we founded Terzo Technologies and unfortunately, we founded it in Northern California, in Silicon Valley, which turns out to be a worse and worse place to be every day. We did a national search and we looked for a place to build this company in Alpharetta, Georgia. Came up winning over some spots around Dallas, Texas and a few other locations we looked at. Spoke to Councillor Mitchell about this as well. So, you all are doing a real good job of running this town for the past however long you all have been involved. I heard 12 years earlier for you, mayor, so congratulations. But, you know, Alpharetta is succeeding at being the kind of place where people want to come build businesses and especially tech businesses. Terzo's an enterprise AI company. Everybody wants their high school kids to have opportunities in AI and have opportunities in the future industries that are coming. And to do that, you first have to have a place where people are willing to come live and do business and have the kind of infrastructure that's required. And the infrastructure that's required for small startups are not just the roads and the spaces and all the other things you all are dealing with, but Karen Cashin and her team over at Tech Alpharetta is a small cog in that wheel that helps the magic happen. So, you know, I won't repeat the things that Karen and her team do. I've seen incubators in Silicon Valley. I used to invest there. I've seen, I know the people very well done at Atlanta Tech Village and some of the other were members at ATDC as well down in Atlanta. But what's going on here in Alpharetta is as impressive as what I've seen in these other big hubs. When we, when I moved here with my family, we had one employee in Georgia. We now have 11 full-time employees that all work out of Alpharetta. We've got six of them that rely on Karen's space every day because we're outgrowing it and trying hard not to get graduated so that we get booted out. But we're working with, you know, Karen got us connected with Roger Lusby III and these fine people over here at Fraser and Dieter in Alpharetta and also with Ronnie Cannon, who's with CLRE Advisors, who's helping us now outgrow Tuck Alpharetta and look for a spot here in Alpharetta for a bigger home for us. So, when these companies start getting built in a place like Alpharetta, you gain the employment. But you also, the accountants and the lawyers and the real estate people, you know, also all benefit by providing services and because of the network. So, that's what I had to say about Tech Alpharetta. But I wanted to tell you all that there's a lot more to it, right, to make Alpharetta the kind of place where these companies are coming and wanting to grow. So, it's all, it's all important, including the Tech Alpharetta piece of that. So, thank you for your time tonight.
If there's no one else that wants to come forward, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Alpharetta and Alpharetta Development Authority for funding for Tech Alpharetta in the amount of $95,000 for the next fiscal year and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I'll second that. I have a motion to approve by Councilman Wells, second by Councilman Mitchell. Any discussion? Councilman Hypes.
I want to start, I want to start by saying that the work Tech Alpharetta does is laudable and it's good for Alpharetta. And to me, there's nothing about the matter that's before council tonight that bears upon whether or not Tuck Alpharetta is doing good work. A business proposition is each year brought before council. And I, for one, know for at least three years, maybe four years, I've asked for financials in order to support a business proposition to supplement CEO salary without knowing what the salary and the compensation was. Each year, I was told those would be coming. Never have they been brought forward. We had this meeting last year, in the community room last year, when we were having the AV refresh in here. I remember distinctly having the conversation with Ms. Cashin about the P&Ls and the finances for this business proposition that's brought before council to provide $95,000 of tax dollars to supplement CEO salary, when I did not know what the compensation was. On top of that, the city provided free rent for all these years. Tech Alpharetta does great work, but on the business proposition, I will not support this request in any year unless I have financials prior.
Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you. I would just like to say, Jimmy and I were here at the very onset of the creation of Tech Alpharetta and it's been, it's been quite a journey. And never before did I, did I think that it would play such a pivotal role in the economic development of our city. And it continues to. And while there are issues that we may or may not need to get worked out, that we do need to get worked out, I think you've done an incredible job, Ms. Cashin, in leading this. And $95,000 to me is an investment in our economic development as a city. And I think we're, I think other cities are jealous of us because we have that tech program that continues to start new businesses and it continues to foster businesses and new employees and new residents within our city. And it's also just a great tool to, like the Alpharetta Loop in many ways, but on a much more sophisticated level. It attracts people to our city like Eric and it helps to retain and keep these people. So, this is why I can support this tonight and thank you all and good luck with the new move.
Councilman Brady?
I think Tech Alpharetta is an incubator. It's just incredible. It is, and I would be on record by saying that it's absolutely incredible. I think we're seeing these incubators all across the country in our state that are doing absolutely fantastic. Combining those and bringing that collective ideas together and the support and connecting that to capital is just, you know, once you put capital in there, you just ignite something and it's absolutely special. But I think we can expand that further into life sciences and things like that. There's other resources here in Alpharetta that can engage upon those life sciences. We have several colleges here and universities that would embrace that. I think the growth is there, the capabilities are there. But I'm also going to take a little bit of a side here to Councilman Hypes that there's also responsibility and accountability. And behaviors like that, just to me, from the finance side, is just, you know, I take that very seriously and understand what he's saying. To not know the numbers, to ask questions and you not know them, to me is also a little bit different. I mean, just everybody knows the details. You're living and breathing it every day. We should know those things. So, that's the other part of that, that leadership, that management piece. So, be supportive, but next year, I'll probably be joining the same conversation with Mr. Hypes about what's said and that activity. So, it's dependent upon you. Thank you.
Councilman Will.
So, I'll throw out here that I just got added to Tech Alpharetta's executive board and I appreciate y'all having me on the board. And I can tell you that in order to address both of y'all's concerns, we can get the financials to you whenever you want them. And from your perspective, I think we do have the beginnings of a plan moving forward to significantly increase both revenues and the impact of the incubator. And we'll have those coming out in the next couple of months, I think, as we work through those plans. So, I think a lot of good things are going to happen in the next 12 months with Tech Alpharetta. And I look forward to filling you guys in on all the details as we go forward, so.
Well, I'll just say, congratulations on another successful year. I do think, more so recently, I've been fairly engaged for pretty much since the creation. And so, I kind of take some of that for granted. I go to events more frequently than most of our council members. I go to some board meetings from time to time, so I feel like I'm kind of in the loop on most of that stuff. But I think one of the things that's clear to me now is, thank you, Brian, for joining the executive committee. I think we've lost that consistent engagement between our electeds and the organization. And so, I think on both sides, we need to do a better job of engaging so that all of us know what we're doing to support all of you and how we can do a better job of it and understand what the organization is. Communication is always critical for any organization. We're great partners. Y'all have done tremendous things in our community. And I have no regrets over any of the funding. It's returned an ROI more than I could have ever imagined 12, 15 years ago when we first even thought about it. So, with that being said, let's wrap this thing up. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass for one. Next item up, resolution for approval of- Next item up, resolution for approval of a policy for engineering design services for federal aid highway program-funded projects. Director Harris, you have this item.
I always yield to the attorney. She's making faces at me right now, so.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to go ahead and read the resolution?
If you want to.
Okay. "A resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia to adopt the Georgia Department of Transportation procurement manual for the procurement management and administration of engineering and design-related consultant services and to authorize the mayor to execute the G dot letter of agreement and to reaffirm the executed G dot confirmation of understanding as part of the city's local administered project LAP recertification application."
Thank you, Ms. S. Wang. Director Harris?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item may sound very familiar, because we were before you in April trying to get something similar done through this process. But to rebrief, to get federal aid from G dot, you have to become LAP certified. That's a local administered project, meaning the municipality then can run the project itself and do the procurement, et cetera. We have to do that every three years, so we were up for the three-year process in April. We tried, we attempted to have policies, procedures that we felt were in compliance with what they were asking us to do, and they are, but they would take a whole review process, and we may get delayed before we actually get certified, and we need to be certified soon so we don't impact our ability to get federal dollars. So it's just turned out where we realized the better option is just to, like every city around, approve their procurement processes, which we'd have to follow anyway. So that's why it sounds familiar, but we're just going to adopt their procurement processes as it relates to engineering and design services for federal grant dollars coming through G dot, specific ones from the highway program. Hope that helps.
I think I hear Councilman Hypes coming back, so I was going to wait until he gets back in the room.
I'll repeat it if you want.
We're back up to five, so, okay. Thank you, Director Harris. Do we have any questions for Director Harris on this item? Seeing none? Do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, I don't think we have any public here anymore, so we'll just close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for the approval of a policy for engineering and design services for federal aid highway program-funded projects as presented.
I have a motion by Councilman Brady, and we have a second by Councilman Will, to approve the resolution as read by the city attorney. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it passes unanimously. So the next item up is unfinished business. Do I need to go back and?
The first thing we would need to do, Mr. Mayor, on this item, is to see if any of the three members that are here that voted against this item at the last meeting were willing to offer a motion to reconsider. Anybody can second that motion if it should be made, and if that passes, then I'll go into a further explanation.
Make a motion to reconsider?
I have a motion to reconsider by Councilman Hypes, a second by Councilman Will. I'll turn the floor over. Mr. Drinkard, Mr. Lagerblum, who wants?
Yeah, we're going to need a vote on that real quick, and then I'll be making the presentation.
My apologies. All those in favor of the motion to reconsider, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously.
Perfect. Yes, Mayor, City Council, to keep this, I think, as brief as I can, because I've talked individually with most of you, if not all of you, about this project. This was the item that did not pass at the last meeting, which was the redo, renovation, reconstruction of our city website, as well as some other things that we bid as options. In talking with you, I got the sense that there was some that were hesitant to support it with the mass notification option as one of the options that we were to buy. And when asked, and it was a true statement, when asked, are we looking for a vote on this whole package, or are we looking on some modification or modified version thereof? At that point, we were looking at the whole package with the different add-ons. There was three different options. One was mass notification, one was a form tool, and the other was sort of a behind-the-scenes look at accessibility issues that government websites are required to maintain compliance with. Still do believe that a recommendation, if you all would reconsider this, would be to redo the city's website, as well as invest in that tool that manages for accessibility, as well as the form tool that can cause us to be automated. And if you all choose not to have any interest in a mass notification system at this time, it could either be taken off of this particular approval, or we could bid it separately at some point in the future. There are many vendors in that space, so it's not as though this is a one-vendor-one option for mass notification. We went back to the vendor. They looked at their pricing. We asked for a best and final and said, you know, a couple of the concerns that were at the last meeting was what the price was, as well as what that uplift percentage was once we got to year four. We're in receipt of a best and final from the vendor that we were recommending. If you were to go with the mass notification module, the first-year price would be $105,022. If we were to go without it, we would have a first-year cost of $88,909. So basically, the difference in $10,000, $12,000, $17,000 there. And they came back with that uplift at a 3% as opposed to the 5% that we presented at the last meeting. So I think the package all around got better. I understand the reasons it failed at the last meeting. Hopefully, we've gotten to where we can have a satisfactory outcome and start to work on our website that is at end of life, and I'll present that to you tonight for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lagerblum. Appreciate you digging back into that. Do we have any questions for Mr. Lagerblum? Councilman Will?
First, thank you very much for going back through that process, and obviously, either way we go, we're saving money, which is a huge benefit to the city. You made a comment that we can add the mass notification point later. Everything I've looked at when I did my own personal research was that this mass notification is significantly more expensive than what we could buy it from almost anybody else. So you made the comment that we could add it later. Are you positive that another vendor could tack, could attach their mass notification onto this platform?
There's multiple notification, mass notification systems out there, and this recommendation for the vendor for a website is, this is what they do, is in the government space. So can I rattle off a list of names that I can say yes with certainty, but I am pretty certain, yes?
Yes, it can be done, is really what I'm looking for. And is that mass notification actually attached to the website, or is it just?
Doesn't have to be.
Another separate service that we buy?
Could be.
Okay, so that is not the website. So we can vote and get the website done, deal with the mass notification later.
And I would appreciate including the two options, like I mentioned, that dealt with the form creation tool, as well as?
Those are fine.
The accessibility thing in the background. That's insurance policy.
Just that mass notification is the only thing I'm concerned with. Okay.
Yep. And then you would basically, if anybody wanted to make a motion to do that without the mass notification, it would be to support the alternative that's presented in the staff report.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Lagerblum?
Jim, I appreciate the fact that you want this, and it's important to you. I just want to make sure we get the best price on the mass notification piece.
I was just being facetious, because you followed up your question with another question.
I was probably a con. I did want to say that.
You have the floor.
That's it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Shapiro?
We have no public comment, sir.
And we really don't have any public here, so we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we vote for the proposal 24-116, city website, design, development, and hosting, and go with the secondary alternate proposal in the amount not to exceed $88,909, and that would be the one initially without the mass notification.
I have a motion by Councilman Mitchell, a second by Councilman Will. Any discussion?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for all the work you've done, James and Chris, on this. It's been a, literally, a 12-year project. Just to make it quick, I do think it's important that we have some kind of mass notification, but we'll do that on a second time and hopefully find a better, more feasible way to do that. So, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion to approve as outlined by Councilman Mitchell, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. Hip, hip, hooray! Councilman Hypes looked at me and said, has it really been that long? Pretty much as long as I've been on council. So that'll wrap up that portion of the meeting. There is no public, no public comment? Any reports?
We aren't going back to that one item?
I'm sorry?
It was the item that we tabled. Did we need to go back to that?
No, we'll, if you don't mind, yeah, we'll leave that on the table. In the process of identifying a solution for one thing, we uncovered another. It is going to be an easy explanation at the next meeting, and when an item's on the table, it will stay there. It'll come back on the 15th of July. If it doesn't come back on the 15th of July, it'll automatically die, and we'll have to reintroduce it. But it's safe with the action you took tonight. We don't need a different action.
Excellent. No action. Any reports? Well, the only thing we have to do is to call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilman Mitchell, a second by Councilman Brady, before y'all reconsider. All those in favor, vote yes. No. Say, "Go Cats." And it does pass unanimously, lady and gentlemen. We are adjourned. Thank you. See you next time.